Good evening all. Welcome to the latest edition of the Nottingham Planning Board on this Wednesday, the 23rd, 2025. My name is Chris Evans. I am the Secretary of the Planning Board. We have a couple of members out, so by virtue of our bylaws, I become the Chair for the evening. So we'd like to start off with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So for tonight, we have four members. If you want to introduce yourselves here.
John Decker, BOS Representative.
Chris Evans, Secretary.
Glenn Griswold.
Adam Ryan.
Larry Haney, SRPC.
Thank you. So I think our first order of business is that we should, we had, our former chairman has resigned, so I don't know if we need to officially accept that resignation or make some vote act on that. So why don't we do that?
Sounds good.
I will make the motion to accept Teresa Bascom's resignation and offer our thanks.
I'll second that.
And a vote? Any discussion?
What can you discuss? Aye.
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 Okay. Second order of business, we do have a couple of members of the public who have expressed an interest in being on the planning board. Both of these gentlemen have been on the planning board previously, and we, I think we should have them come up and introduce themselves and then make action if they want to make a, to appoint them. We can appoint them as a board.
Sounds good.
So.
If you guys would sort of come up and introduce yourselves.
I'm Skip Severance. On the board last year for a year to fill an opening. I was previous planning board chairman for a while, and I guess I like filling vacancies. And I'll be an alternate.
Okay.
Me too.
My name is Dirk Grotenheiss. I too am a former board member, and I was a chair for a number of years. I think I served from around 2010 to 2022. I'm a professional civil engineer. I have an engineering background. I'd be happy to volunteer for a position on the board.
Thank you. Thank you very much in our dire need times here. I don't know if we need a motion to appoint a member?
We would have to, so we need to appoint one member, and we can appoint the other one as alternate.
Check.
So the member would fill the term until next year where there would be a vacancy for voting. The alternate, it's a three-year appointment.
Correct. You can do it as two votes for one, but just make sure identifying by name, who's what.
Right.
It looks like Skip is going to be the alternate.
Yeah. That's what you guys want, may I ask?
Is that, you guys good with that?
Is that the way you guys want, yeah, you both experienced?
It's fine.
Okay.
Very qualified candidates.
Thank you for stepping up, gentlemen.
Yeah, sure.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for stepping up in our time of need.
Certainly.
Make the motion?
Make a motion to vote. And do we have to do them one at a time?
You can do it in one, as long as you name specifically for which person, for which position.
All right. Skip, as per requested, a motion to take him on as an alternate.
For a term of three years or whatever, I guess.
For a three-year term. I don't have to say anymore.
Vote.
Yeah, your name?
Dirk Grotenheiss.
Dirk Grotenheiss as a member for how many years?
It's just to fill out.
Just to fill out for the...
The remainder of this year till the election.
All right, to fill out for the remainder of the election, till the next election.
And I'll second that. Thank you. And any discussion? Vote? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I can do your oath of office.
Whoa.
We can make, here, I'll let you guys fill in then first, and then we'll do the rest of it. This will be my first, so this will be my first time doing oath of office, so you'll have to watch if I do it right.
Can't prepare this.
All right, welcome aboard, gentlemen.
Thank you. We're happy. Proud to be here.
They can, as soon as they're appointed, or as soon as they sign their roles. We need people today, so that's perfect.
Look at you. You're ready. You're ready.
Wait, the tougher shoulder chair.
You guys.
All right. I'm sorry, I probably put you here anyway. Let's punch it. It's right here, try to... Yeah, right, exactly. Town of Nottingham. So you just, so you read that, I guess?
I, Dirk Grotenheiss, do solemnly and sincerely swear to affirm and that I will bear faith and true allegiance to the United States of America and to the state of New Hampshire, and will support the Constitution thereof, so help me God. Do you need to keep reading the next one, or is that...
Yes, yes. Wait, is it? Yeah, I guess you still...
I, Dirk Grotenheiss, do solemnly swear to and affirm that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon me as a planning board member for the term of the remainder of the vacancy, according to my best abilities, agreeable to the rules and regulations of this Constitution and the laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help me God.
All right. I don't have to say anything?
No.
Excellent, this is easy.
Usually you read it, he repeats after you, but that's fine.
All right, okay, so that's the repeat after me part, okay. Election official, okay, hang on, I'm supposed to sign this part, I think, right?
You can do it after, it'll work well.
All right. If you want to do skip, skipper came after me, so I can do this one.
Can I read along with you?
Sure.
I grant severance, do solemnly and sincerely swear and affirm that I will bear the faith and true allegiance to the United States of America and the state of New Hampshire, and will support the Constitution thereof, so help me God. I grant severance, do solemnly and sincerely swear and affirm that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon me as alternate for ten or three years, according to the best of my abilities, agreeably to the rules and regulations of this Constitution and the laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help me God.
All right, welcome aboard, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calvary's here.
Thanks for all your positive votes.
Thank you for coming on.
It was unanimous, sir. So for tonight, we have two new members. Thank you, gentlemen, very much, and they've just been sworn in. Tonight Dirk will act as a member, a voting member, and Skip will be an alternative until such time as somebody on the board recuses themselves, which might happen. And then you would become a voting member. Check. Okay. Next on the agenda was voting of a new chair. I am willing to have discussion about, having a discussion, I think under our bylaws, I can act as the chair for tonight readily, and that, we voted that actually in a couple of years ago, thankfully, that if the chair and the vice chair weren't here, that the secretary could then fulfill those, that position. Do we want to talk about voting on a chair at this time, or do we want to push that off till the next meeting?
I think, yes, as far as a permanent chair, we should hold off because we have two members that aren't here, right, that are going to remain members.
Right.
So I would suggest holding off, but for tonight, I think we've got everything, you know, under control. You know, as a secretary, you can step into the chair role for, for tonight.
Check. So. That was my impression, too.
Yeah.
Okay. So on tonight's agenda, we have public hearings. We're going to start with case number 25-003, SIT Nottingham Business Park, 145 old Turnpike Road, and that's been continued from our previous meeting.
Sorry.
Good evening, everyone. TJ Melvin with Millennium Engineering. Here with me tonight is the applicant of Nottingham Business Park, Tom Moulton. Since we were last in front of the board, we did receive a peer review letter from CMA, which we have submitted revised plans in response to comments to. As far as the changes that we've made to the plan, they were mostly note and detail related. We really didn't make any substantive changes to the plans whatsoever. Really just swapping some details out, making sure all of our specs were correct, just changing some notes around. Since the last time we were here, we also submitted the hydrogeological study, which was reviewed by CMA as well. They had some minor comments as far as switching out the, you know, some of the site plans that were referenced in the report itself, or some of the older site plans that were previously submitted for this project. With that, the only other item that was brought up in the CMA peer review was the question of, does a conditional use permit need to be submitted for this project? And I believe we sort of touched on that at the first meeting. We do have disturbance within 25 feet. However, as the boards are aware, this is kind of a strange project where some of the work has already actually been done previously. So I guess we would kind of look for your recommendation on if you think it's necessary, we submit the permit. For example, like the location, the retaining wall to the, I guess, on the plant bottom left corner of the building, like that, that slope is pretty much already in place and has been in place. So yes, we're working within 25 feet, but it's areas that have previously been disturbed. So I guess we would just look for your feedback on that. Other than that, unless the board has any specific questions, I feel we've addressed all of CMA's comments. I'm sure they'll have some minor things back and forth as far as details and wrapping up the loose ends on that, but we're both here to answer any questions we may have.
So there was no permit previously pulled from?
No. So my understanding of it was that the 25-foot no disturb came in, I believe it was in 2023, maybe 2024. Blair, I know we talked about it the last time, but it's a newer policy.
It is.
Where, you know, the building itself is actually already in place, and the access drives are shaped in bare soil now. So that was kind of like the weird situation where I even threw it in the letter as, you know, we're discussing with you guys and figure out what the best way to move forward with that is.
Okay, so there was an interim period that it wouldn't have been required before, but then required now, but...
Yeah, that's my understanding of it.
It's already done, so.
Right, yeah. It was 2023, because in 2024, we didn't really do any zoning amendments. And, you know, the work would have been done prior, so it, there's an argument to be made. I haven't looked at it. I mean, we've all just received this stuff, so I haven't been able to go through all of it, but, you know, I think if the board wants to take its time to look at it at the next meeting and decide whether a CUP is warranted, then I think that that is a fair process, a fair course of action at this time. Just, you know, we just got two new members, or two that aren't here, and we just got this, you know, less than a week ago. So, and there's a lot of other stuff within their response letter. So if there's other things that the board wants to talk about, too, we don't have to get too hung up on that at the moment. But, you know, the board's welcome to do whatever it wants. You can make a decision right now, or, you know, like I said, have a look on it and make a determination at the next meeting.
Okay. Well, we, I'm seeing a report with responses dated April 20th, and I, it, there's 22 pages and a 40-page plan, and have not had opportunity to look at the comments from CMA and match that up to the plan. So I would say that we would probably need to continue, having just received this in a short order of time ago. So we'll start with that. The, I just had a, I, after we did the site walk, I, you know, we found the cemetery in the woods. Is there proposed, like, some sort of markings around that, or fence or protections?
Yeah, there'll be a retaining wall kind of on the development side of that, kind of, block off about half of it.
There are just trees there. It would be great if there was some sort of more marking or something there, just...
We can do something. I've got a graveyard in my yard, believe it or not, in Hampton. It's a graveyard, see all this graveyard in town?
Yeah.
Yeah, this was a lot of people do.
I fixed, I mean, I put rope, I put chain up, and they get granite things, so I know how to make it look pretty.
Awesome.
I think that would be appropriate. That's not hard to do.
Okay. On the, on the CU, there was, you know, we all saw the wall at the retaining wall, and I think if you made that road wider, you're going to be pushing more into the wetlands, and, you know, that's, we should think about that being existing and potentially adequate to get vehicles on and around there. So we should be able to act on that. The, there was also, was it a conditional use waiver or waiver for the road going out to the well?
Yeah, yeah. So I can't remember, I thought the board may have acted on that at the last meeting, but I know we talked about it. It's kind of like an existing pathway to get to the existing well that's within 10 feet of the property line. That's all it's ever going to be used for, it's just occasional access to maintain the well.
Yeah, no, I was going to say, I think, believe it crosses over to the residential zone, but it's really just access to get to the well. So we put the system on a tank that will serve as the sprinkler in domestic in the building, and also, you know, later on down the road for any further development that will be used, and then the town would be able to tap into that well, or the water tank that we have for fight-up use if they needed to. We certainly would agree to that. We're not even going to charge for the water, which is great. Up away.
Very nice. So any comment from the...
I have a couple of questions. First is that the septic system, there were notes that the final septic system design was dependent on what you end up getting for tenants.
Correct.
So I'm just a little concerned about that, just because we want to make sure that whatever you put in for a septic system is not going to, one, impact any of the wetlands, and, two, is sufficient for whatever is going in there.
Well, I think, one, it would be sufficient, because not to be sufficient wouldn't be sufficient, right? So we have to, to your point, we have to make it so it's appropriate size and approved by the state, and, you know, to the correct size, and the site is big enough, because some of the proposed sites that we have under the parking lot and some others is not even close to being the wetlands. So I think, to address your question, I think it would absolutely be located in a spot that would not be near the wetlands anyway. Plus, it would have to be built right, so it wouldn't do that. Good question.
I'm, well, so part of what I'm getting into is depending on what the use of the building is, is going to affect, you know, how big that system is.
Sure.
So I just want to make sure that, you know, whatever system is designed is large enough for future use as well as current.
Yep.
That's, that's my comment on that one.
Yeah, that's kind of why we've kind of holding off on doing that at this point, is just to make sure, once Tom does have a tenant in place, we know exactly what the use will be, then we'll submit the septic design to the state, and if the board chooses, you know, we can make that a condition of approval that we submitted to you guys as well for any further, you know, discussion if need be.
I have a question about, I believe, the wall, the wall that exists on the eastern corner, southeastern corner. Is that the one you guys are talking about?
The one just like planned south of the building?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It says proposed. That's not on sheets, C2 and C something else?
C10.
And, I saw that, and I thought, I thought there was a wall already there, so.
This, no, no.
There's no wall.
No, there's no wall.
There's no wall.
The slope of, kind of like the downhill of the access around the building is in place, but the wall itself is not.
Okay, all right. So it's still a proposed wall?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Has the board received responses back from CMA from the resubmital, or the backcheck the comments and responses? No. We received CMA's response on the 28th of March, and then they submitted their response. It's dated the 20th of April. But what's a little wonky about it is that there was a review that was done back in 2023, and they've kind of been building off of that one. So they had submitted plans. We had a review. The application was withdrawn, but they kind of carried forward that 2023 review by CMA, and now MEI has been responding to that and any additional response, additional comments that were added to it. Yeah.
So it had been reviewed before?
Yeah.
The thing was, we had, we had one page, a plant that was pretty similar, and we did it again, and we got 13 pages.
Yep.
Which a lot of it was like, an I should be this, and a T should be crossed. It's kind of like, you know, a little cleanup, which I understand, but, you know, I'm saying 13 pages, maybe that's how they justify, how they justify the fee that I have to pay for. But we've done it twice now, so I think we're pretty well down the road of what this plan is all about. Free-conditioned building, we're kind of where we're at. And, you know, I'd be lying to you if I was telling you, we're anxious to get this thing approved. I got people lined up to keep working, and we just really got to get going on this thing. And I don't know if it was out of the site, but I'm sure the town was very impressed with what we did, the condition it's in, and, I mean, we got a lot out there that we're trying to keep moving. And I've got a potential tenant coming in June, and I want to get some of this work done before they get in there. And believe me, if this tenant comes through, you guys are going to want it. It's going to be great for the community, employment, everything. So I mean, I'm not trying to push people along, but I'm just trying to be transparent of where we're at with us.
And, you know, I, I appreciate your, your perspective there, and our board does, I'm sure. And what you've done there is fabulous, and I've actually talked to a lot of different people in the town, and there's a lot of positive feedback for, you know, what your project there. So thank you for doing that. We just did receive this report on April 20th, and, from Millennium, and we, I, it's 22 pages, and I can honestly say I have not had any sort of opportunity to go through that in the last couple of days, with the Easter and all that. So, so I think we do need to continue to another hearing, and give us a chance to look at CMA and this report and the plans, and try to get our ducks all in a row.
If, if I may, if we were to request the conditional use permit tonight, that would allow them to work on it, you know, before the next meeting, so that they can have that available, even though we haven't had a chance to really go through this yet. And I think that that might be a little bit more, a little bit more efficient use of everyone's time.
Okay.
I would greatly appreciate that comment. Thank you for that comment, because frankly, we've got an electrician lined up to come in in the next year, too, because he had an opening in his schedule, and he held it for us, because we were hoping this was going to go through. Because now if the building's enclosed, the lighting in there isn't that great. It's just emergency lighting. We can't get a, you know, building inspector won't give us an electrical permit to do emergency lighting, and this guy's lined up to go. I've already bought the, spent $100,000 on lights, they're all in the trailer, and he's ready to go in the next couple of days. So that would be a tremendous help to us, because it's going to take a month to put that in, to your point about efficiency, and then if that tenant comes in, I can actually flip the lights on, and they can see what's inside the building, which would be helpful. But that would be, I really appreciate that comment, because that's kind of what we're looking for.
Do you wish to make a motion of such?
Let's, why don't we see if there's any public comment?
Yeah, exactly.
I do have one more question on the handicap ramp detail stuff, which is C19. Just that you have like square corners to the sidewalk. I don't know how this stuff works, but I would suggest rounding that, so, you know, people are going to cut those corners anyway. You've got grassy area there, and it would just, to me, that would make sense.
Okay, yeah.
That's easy to do, sure.
Which sheet are you looking at? C19. Kind of caught my eye earlier.
Mine looks different.
C19?
Yeah, this one.
It's this, this section right here, middle top section.
Yeah.
It's got, you know, just, because it's got, the ramp, and it's just straight to straight corners.
Yeah, and...
Which, in reality, doesn't work well.
No, no, and that's kind of what typically, when we look behind the building, it's really just the handicap hatched area, maybe like three feet, and then up to the walkway that runs parallel to the wall. So that details a little off from, it's kind of just like a generalization of where things go. But on the back of the building itself, it's just a straight shot of sidewalk along the face of the building, with just the entrances.
Yeah, because it was showing grassy area between the curbing and the sidewalk.
Yeah.
If there's no grass there, then that's fine.
It's like, it's like two feet.
Give them snow tires to get through, I know.
Yeah.
At this interval, we should open to public comment, perhaps?
Is anyone here?
Seven, 31. Anybody from the public wish to make any comments or questions about this? There being done, we'll close the public comment section of this.
I'd like to make a motion to request the conditional use permits, or permit, I should say, as noted in the response letter. say, as noted in the response letter. How bloody are you? Comment, comment number three, I believe?
It, it's a couple of different places, actually, so.
I wasn't sure if I needed to be specific.
Just cite the letter.
Yeah.
The date of the letter.
As noted in the response letter dated April 20th, 2025.
Oh, sorry, so can I just ask a quick question regarding that? So I guess your motion that we do need to apply for it?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second it. I'll second that.
Any discussion? A vote?
You're in, because we're short, so.
Good.
Yeah.
How do you want to do this, Chris? You roll call vote, or you just?
We don't have to roll call.
Okay.
So.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Let me pose. Stands, yeah, good.
Thank you. Okay. And the next part is, are we discussing continuing so that we can go through this long letter and plan and?
Yeah, they can still move forward at this point now, because of that.
Right.
Yeah, so, yeah, let's, I'd like to read it more, too, for the rest of it.
If you want to make a motion, our next meeting, May 14th, May 28th?
Can you have a CUP application to us with enough time before the 14th, the meeting on the 14th?
Is there a, do you have an actual, I can get it to you definitely before then, but do you have a deadline that you have to meet, or is it different kind of?
I mean, the 7th would be ideal.
I, I can do it by before the 7th, for sure.
Because then it gives me a chance to take a look at it and, you know, include it in my staff report. But their packets go out on the 9th, so if we have it the 7th, I can at least include it.
Where we have all the other information already submitted, do we need, just need the application? Or do you want like a resubmission of the, the plans separate with that as well?
No, no, we've taken conditional use permit applications, like, sort of, you discovered along the way.
In addition to it, yeah.
Yeah, so you don't need to submit a whole package, it's, it's sort of like an add-on.
Okay.
But that's happened before, the board has done that before. So that's fine, it's just getting through the questions and showing us that you meet the criteria of getting that CUP approved.
So 14th, where for, so you'll try for the 7th and?
You have to get the material to by the 7th for a 14th meeting?
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, John. One, one quick question, I just made so I can clarify, we have a building permit, are we paid, get a building permit, I know this is a site permit, I just need to know that we should go get the electrical for the lighting and just some rough plumbing down inside to keep efficient use of our subs. I'm assuming that this will work for that?
I don't think he's going to issue that. I think that's been the whole hangup, this whole time.
But it's, it's site, it's not the building, right? And if we have a conditional use permit, I would think for the site, I think that it, that should, you know, that's like really what's critical tonight, to get those two trades just moving. And it's inside the building, it's not anything to do outside with tanning walls, drainage and all this, so.
I mean, you know, you had the response on March 28th, and, you know, we're just getting it five days before the meeting. If you can convince Dale, but I don't think he's going to give you a permit, I think that's what he's stated, he's not going to give you a permit until the board gives the site plan review approval.
Even though it's in the building, you know?
Yeah, I mean, you don't have an approved site plan, he can't, he can't issue a building permit without it.
Do we have a conditional approval right now, or not?
On anything, on nothing.
My understanding was that if it was inside the building, that was strictly on code enforcement in building, not necessarily the planning board.
That's kind of my point.
There was a prior.
I was going to blase thing, I, I, look, I'm being respectful, but I'm telling you, I got a problem, I got to try to, I need you guys to help me with this.
It's not in our purview.
What's it?
Right. It's not in our purview.
It's not in our purview, and he has stated he doesn't intend to issue any building permits for this site until its site plan review is approved, but, you know.
Are you from?
I don't know that, I don't know that this board can instruct him to give you a building permit.
Right, all right, we're going to have to call and talk to him.
I think it's going to come down to him, and, and I feel like he's kind of been pretty clear about this in communications with you, so.
Well, he said, I mean, back then, he was saying, you haven't even applied, you haven't even put it in, because of, for all the various reasons that we've just gone through, because of changing engineering firms, that's why we withdrew and we came back again, this thing's cost me a small fortune because of the previous engineering. Not your problem, my problem, I get it, you know what I mean? I, I think when we pulled the building permit, like, at least it's emergency lighting, it isn't even the finished lighting, if you know what I mean.
But I mean, the work happens during the day, you know, I mean.
Yeah, but now that the walls are up and things, it's darker in there. I, I know what you're saying, when it was open, it was different.
Yeah.
And it's, to me, honestly, it's not a big deal to run some lights for emergency lighting.
I think, I agree, I think that's an argument you have to make with Dale.
Yeah, you're probably right.
The planning board doesn't have that.
I know, we've had this conversation. It keeps being the scope creep, like, you guys keep doing stuff, and nothing's been approved, right? So like, you got, you know, this is, like.
You know, I did pay for a building permit, I mean, I did, I bought this from the town, helped the town, nobody, I was the only guy that stepped up and bought this place in the town, where I could get off the tax roll, and so I could pay the taxes. So I mean, there are some, it's almost like there's going to be some common sense and reasonableness here, I don't know why Dale's being a, or if he has to be a hard ass with this thing, it's, you know what I mean, I get a licensed electrician, you're not doing anything that's wrong. And I pulled the building permit, now maybe that's, I don't want to get myopic and not, try to be, I want to be open, and I want to understand the process, too.
I, I think there's a distinction, we, we had talked about this at a previous meeting, and there was some distinction beside, between outside lighting that is on the site plan, lighting around the building and going onto the site, and then the inside, so maybe if your application is only for inside versus anything outside, which is, is in our.
I, I just don't see it happening. I mean.
I think what Dirk said, well, this is talk to Dale tomorrow, I got to go.
I agree with Tom.
Of course.
No, not of course, taking it as a separate person, it is inside, it is a safety hazard, and it's also, you know, you do say during the day, it's, you know, it's light up, but what if these people want to get in later, it's not that light, that, that, it's not that light in there, it is pre-dock, and it is, it is a building permit already, and of course, I'm on Tom's side, but I'm also looking at it from your point of view, too, it's no big deal to put lights in a building.
But this board can't do anything about it.
That's, yeah, it's outside of our purview.
So should, should we make a determination as a board that we care about the light, the lights on the outside or under our jurisdiction?
It doesn't matter.
It's literally outside of our power.
The lighting on the outside doesn't matter, other than I just want to do it for security, vandalism and things like that, but that will happen maybe in May. It's really the inside that I really need to get done now.
Yeah, you're going to have to have that conversation.
With Dale.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I would suggest separating the outside and inside on that conversation, because.
The outside, I can wait till you guys get it done, I'm fine with that.
And I think if we hit all of the material, you know, that prior before the next meeting, make it very efficient, and if everything's in, you know, I think everybody can probably agree.
Okay, fair enough.
I do think a lot of the items should be dropping off of it, was, you know, remove this detail, you know, I had city, I apologize, I didn't have town, you know, there's a lot of clerical errors.
Can I ask you a question?
But I, I think a lot of it will be resolved.
Does the board have no problem technically if there was lighting inside the building opposed to nothing outside?
We don't have any.
We don't have any comment about that, yeah, exactly.
It would all be personal opinion, not anything binding.
All right, I was just saying.
Let's do a motion to continue.
Will we make a motion for?
To continue.
To continue?
Yeah.
Okay.
They, I think, they know where they stand, and, you know, the board knows where it stands, and at this point, you know, it's just a matter of going through this response from MEI.
Yeah, then we can make a decision.
Yeah.
Fair enough. You guys have to have enough time to review it, I get that.
Yeah.
It's not fair to give you a, go home and read a book and give me a book report tomorrow when the book's just thick, I get it, I get it.
I'll make the motion to continue this until the May 14th meeting.
I'll second that.
No discussion for me?
No discussion. Vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're supposed to say at seven o'clock?
What's the time?
Huh?
You're supposed to say the time?
In the past, they've always kind of been about that. You have to say what time.
You say, you say the time, you say the date, the time, and the location.
And the motion.
Yeah, so a motion to continue is date and time certain, so it has to be.
Okay.
The date, the location, and the time.
For the, where, where the continuation will be.
Oh, for the, yes.
I thought you were talking about the current time.
I, I was, thought so, too, and I was very confused.
The meeting time.
Okay.
Because sometimes agendas will say, will give specific times, this, this agenda item's going to start at 7:30, you know, and it won't start before that.
I don't have goodies yet, sir. All right, let's, let's move right along in this exciting evening. Case number 25-006, sub Ernstorf, if I'm saying that right, sorry, 35 Deerfield Road. This is a continued from a previous meeting.
As I have confused myself previously, I will be stepping away from the board.
We definitely need you twice now.
Oh.
So our alternate now becomes a voting member?
Already alternate, because we were short, anyway. Drew was out.
So he's a voting member now?
Well, he still is, he still can vote.
Okay.
Okay.
So be it. That's our, our selectmen representative telling us how to run things, he's.
Vote twice in this.
Vote twice, okay.
He's representing Drew and Glenn, nothing.
Welcome, Mr. Chris Berry.
So, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Christopher Berry with Berry Surveying and Engineering representing the applicants here this evening. I'm not here to take up really any time, or really looking for any action items. I just wanted to give a brief update and then try and answer any questions that some of the board members might have. So the board conducted a site walk, we staked out the center line of the roadway, many members of the board and general public walked the center of the road with us, and there's an area for, that we're requesting a conditional use permit for between two wetland areas. So there's a wetland area that drains to the east, and there's a wetland area that drains to the west, and we're essentially proposing a, a private roadway on the upland island in between them. Within those, that area, there's, during the site walk, based on the spring events that we've had, there's been, there's some water on the ground, some of the board members questioned why that may not have been a wetland. And so with me tonight is Deidre Benjamin, who's the wetland scientist and also holds stormwater credentials. If there were specific questions about that, that you would like her to answer, we'd be happy to try and answer them tonight. We will be supplying the board with a formal report, it was not prepared and submitted 10 days before tonight's meeting, and so we're not here to discuss that formally. But if there were specific questions about why something might be a wetland or not a wetland, I thought maybe you'd like to hear from the wetland scientist of record and not necessarily my interpretation of what a wetland is. Second question that came up at the site walk had to do with, there's some standing water inside the eastern wetland area, it was, you know, right as spring broke, and so there's peepers, as I call them, chattering about, it's almost deafening at times out there, and the board questioned why that was not considered a vernal pool. Deidre's gone out again this year, so she did study last year, but also has gone out this year and has again determined that it's not a vernal pool, there are specific reasons for that, which we'll submit in a formal report. But again, if there were questions related to that, we would like to answer those questions. Secondly, we have met with the Conservation Commission, who I believe was looking to prepare some recommendations to the board or some meeting minutes. My recollection of the meeting was that there was, there was really nothing of substance that came out of that, there were no questions, outstanding questions, and there were no outstanding action items, so. Other than that, I'd be happy to try and answer any questions you have, and if there's any direct questions for Deidre, she's happy to answer them also.
I'd like to hear about vernal pools, in a general sense, I guess?
Okay. Do you want to give an education here to them?
You, you've come all this way, put you up on stage. Thank you.
Thank you. My name's Deidre Benjamin, I'm a certified wetland scientist, as Chris mentioned, I have some other stormwater acronyms, I guess. So, yeah, I've been out on the site a bunch of times, actually, over the last few years, and have done two kind of vernal pool surveys, two seasons in a row. So vernal pools have a pretty specific list of criteria, species criteria, but also kind of hydroperiod criteria, outlet criteria, things like that, so for this, just vernal pools in general, I guess, need to, they can't have a permanent outlet, they have to have a two-month hydroperiod following, following ice out, and that's typically followed by a period of a, like, seasonally dry, annually kind of fluctuating. And then, really, there's primary and secondary vernal pool indicators that we're looking for, and they're, the primary ones are pretty specific, you're talking about wood frog, a few different salamander types, and fairy shrimp, and there's a variety of secondary indicators, most of those are going to be like certain types of larvae, beetles, things like that. So vernal pool studies are done March, April, May, typically, and usually have like a little net, so you can kind of get down into the leaf litter and check and see what's in there. And like Chris said, lots of peepers out there, spring peepers are, I'm sure you guys know, pretty common throughout the state of New Hampshire, they are not indicative of vernal pools, so they're, that isn't one of our primary indicators or a secondary indicator. And I also found little scuds or amphipods out there, they're just kind of like little scurrying bugs that go around the bottom of the pool, but those also can be found in any body of water, essentially.
So they can have water, and at times in the year, they don't have water.
Correct. That's kind of one of the criteria of being a vernal pool, really, is that they, they kind of need to dry out for habitat purposes.
Are they always shaded?
Um, I, I would think that shading, I don't know that they have to be shaded, but yeah, they don't, they typically don't have a lot of other vegetation occurring, it's kind of like a shallow depression, not a lot vegetatively going on. I think a lot of times you have too much vegetation, it leafs out and that, those plants start sucking up all of that water, and they don't have a long enough hydroperiod to keep the vernal pool species alive.
So are, are there indications also in the secondary realms of this, that for the soil underlying the, do you poke at the soil and take a core sample and, and the plants that grow in these wetlands?
For wetlands, yep, for, vernal pools are a little bit different than that.
That, that, I guess I'm trying to just.
Vernal pools are wetlands, so yes, you would look kind of the same, you'd look, if, so if you came across a depression area in August or something, right, that's a time where, if I was out there flagging, I would say, oh, like, this is one that we probably need to come back to and check in the spring, because it'll have soils, the surrounding vegetation might suggest it's wet, but it doesn't have that standing water, but it kind of gives the impression that in the spring it might have some standing water, so.
Oh, okay. So you've been there, and now you've come back for this visit?
Yeah, I have been there, like Chris said, I did vernal pool study last spring season, went back out there, I think April 7th, that was the Monday following the site walk, I believe. And then I, I flagged that site over a period of a few weeks, so I, I've been out there many times over a variety of seasons, so.
And as a conclusion to your summary, you don't think these are vernal pools?
No, I don't think so, I think that they had, you know, like I said, they had the peepers, and they had other things. I think that they had, you know, like I said, they had the peepers and they had other things, but there's a lot of other factors, too, I think, sometimes that play into whether an area is a good spot for a vernal pool. A lot of it has to do with surrounding habitat, so this one had, and nothing special.
I, I think the gen, more directly to your question, Dirk, is that it not only didn't have primary indicators of vernal pool species, but it had no secondary indicators either. So, we don't know whether or not it's going to meet the hydroperiod or not. She'll continue to monitor it, as well as she's monitoring others for us currently. So it may not even meet the hydroperiod. So it may fail on multiple counts.
There was one spot on the west side of the proposed road that it appeared that the water seemed like, like it was running.
Yes. I did check that area. By the time I got out there, two days later, there was no water running in that area. So, but I did poke around, I basically did. The Army Corps has wetland determination form, and it will, kind of gives you the opportunity to walk through any hydrology indicators, the vegetation in the area, and then the soils in the area, and then you can use that to help you, you know, determine if an area's wet, if you're in question. So I basically kind of did an exercise, running through that, made a list of the vegetation in that area. There was obviously some pond, like, minor ponding, or you could tell that there had been water kind of moving through that area. But yeah, by the time I had gotten back, or by the time I had gotten out there after you guys, there was no, there was no running water through that area. The vegetation I observed in that area was a couple of red maple, which, you know, those are considered facultative species. Those can grow in wetland, or they can grow in upland. There was witch hazel, which is considered facultative upland. It trends more toward being an upland species. Eastern hemlock, American beech. I think those were the big ones that I saw. There's white pine on the outer edge there, and a bunch of red oak, actually, too. So, yep. So, that was the important. No, so, like, red oak, white pine, those are strictly upland species. The other ones are considered facultative upland species, and red maple's the one that kind of falls in the middle. And so the Army Corps form has different methods to apply, you know, the indicator status to your plant species, and then the percentage of that plant species found in the area, and it helps you determine whether or not it would meet the criteria for hydrophytic vegetation. And in this area, it did not. We had pretty much overwhelmingly facultative up or upland plant species.
So the short answer is the presence of water doesn't necessarily mean it's a jurisdictional wetland. There are three things we have to look at, and it failed on all three.
Yeah, I kind of worry about it with respect to putting a road in there, and if there's anything underlying that could erode that, or whatever.
So I can speak to that briefly. So, that area is the specific area we have a conditional use permit request for. And so our stormwater is being collected and diverted away from that area, for one. And then, secondly, we are proposing, though we, our stormwater calculations don't show any flow between the two wetlands, we are installing a culvert there, which would allow for, which is oversized and then buried half a foot. The purpose for that is, if there is any groundwater that needs to move or migrate in that area, that the underlying bedding of the stone would continue to allow that to happen, but also if there's any migration of any animals in the area to and from the wetland systems, it can be done in that culvert pipe.
I thought that's where the culvert was going, but I wasn't positive.
Yep.
It's good to hear that's, that makes sense.
Yep. Yeah, we don't want groundwater sort of undermining our, our road design.
Chris, I, I, I knew of this plan, but didn't see much of it. For Deerfield Road, the runoff and all that kind of stuff, is there, and you're not going to depth here, but is there some sort of treatment or whatever that exists there?
So we're proposing to, all of our stormwater is, our roadway is super elevated to one side, so we can capture our flow.
Yep.
And send it to a detention basin, so that we can mitigate our flow. Deerfield Road has flow that comes down, and I'm sure it rips up a torrent through there. Our swale system ties into that. So we're actually capturing some of Deerfield Roads from, from our location to the High Point, which is about 200 feet away. We're capturing that flow and directing it to our basin, so there would be a decrease in flow from Deerfield Road.
Okay.
Cool.
Thank you.
And in the, just, we, we have comments about, and had comments about, traffic flow. Are you doing some tree clearing along that upper side of that, just to kind of get the speeders to get site distance, or?
So we, we're proposing tree clearing at the entrance to our project, which is customary. And then we had produced site distance plans that demonstrated compliance with the site distance requirements.
Okay, perfect. The, we.
I, just to be clear on a portion of your question, I cannot do anything about speeders.
Understood.
Okay.
Damn.
I'm not going to profess that there's some engineering miracle out there for that. There's not.
So thi, this is a private road. I didn't see in the package yet, again, we, we still have, you know, engineering review that we're going to be looking for, and conservation comments that we're going to be looking for. The, the, the road is a private road. It's not going to be paved, it's going to be gravel road?
Nope. I don't know where that came from.
Okay.
It's paved.
It is paved, okay. And there will be a HOA or maintenance agreement for the owners?
Yes. There's a, the private road standards within your subdivision regulations require an HOA be set up and established, and that will be conducted, and we can submit those documents for you, for your review.
Perfect. I think we should, any other comments up here? Open for public comment?
Yes.
If we could, so, seven fifty-eight, we'll open for public comments, if anybody's here. Speak for or against, or?
There is, while they're thinking, there is one. Alana, you sent one around?
Yeah, it's in the binder, but somebody.
Do you want to read that in?
Yeah, probably.
Yes, thank you. Good point. And that was right in front of me here, so it could have, if it was a bear, it would have bit me. So on the public comments, there's a letter here from Michael Roberts, dated four twenty-two, and to the planning zoning board here. Hi, Alana. Michael Roberts, twenty-three Deerfield Road, Nottingham. I was unable to participate at the site walk of the proposed Ernststorf property. I would like to voice my concern about the proposed new roadway onto Deerfield Road. After watching the three twenty-six planning board meeting online, it seems the developer is satisfied with where the new road would enter Deerfield Road. As a resident on Deerfield Road, I can confidently say that most drivers do not drive the posted speed limit of twenty-five miles per hour. I understand that the developer has no control over what people drive on that road, but I think some sort of road study needs to be done to provide clear assessment of the safety of the location of the road. Please share this with the members of the board or any other departments that you think may need this. Thank you, Michael Roberts.
I've got one, one commenter question. It's very, how many units are these?
So there's four proposed off from our progress, and then the large acres would be the fifth, and its access would be further down Deerfield Road.
So very minimal traffic.
Was Susan from Conservation here, but left?
Yeah.
Okay, so she was not making comments at this time, I presume? Okay. We'll close our public session at eight o'clock here. I know you can't do the speed limit.
I, yeah. Nope. I think to answer Dirk's question more succinctly, as he likely knows, the ITE establishes traffic to and from single-family residential homes at about nine point five trips per day. It's almost less than one in the AM peak, and it's about one in the PM peak. So we're talking about forty total trips per day, and likely two trips in the afternoon and one trip in the morning. These are during peak hours. One hour within the peak hour window, so it'd be seven to nine AM. Pretty minimal traffic.
I would think, and I guess I would, my comment on that would be that if, if there's some sort of road study that's really borne on the community to do that, not a single developer of four houses or four units, it's pretty minimal traffic, in my opinion, anyway.
All right, so, without further ado, are, we are waiting on engineering and conservation reports at this time? Do we want to make a motion for an extension for that, that matter?
When did you think you would have some of the information? Are we waiting for the applicant information, or are we waiting for internal review?
Waiting for C M J R. And they were engaged to do that just last week, so.
Yeah, he, Alana asked for May seventh. Fingers crossed we'll get it May seventh.
So we'd like to continue this to the next meeting, then? Is that May fourteenth?
May fourteenth.
At least May fourteenth.
Yeah, the seventh, right, that gives a week.
So is May fourteenth the first meeting or the second?
The first.
If we could do the second meeting, I'm not available at the first meeting, and I, we're likely going to need more time.
Check. May twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five.
Was the board going to consider, I apologize for bringing this up right now, but there was a consideration about perhaps changing the time, the start times of the meetings.
That'd be nice.
Did, did that get any legs? Did that go anywhere?
I wasn't sure if the board wanted to step back, so, but I, I know a few people in the crew is okay with it. Getting it back to me, I definitely want it, and you do, so, I don't know.
Yeah, and that's the reason why, because as I was saying, it's what reminded me when you made your motion, you have to do it to a date. So, right now, the fourteenth is locked in at seven PM, because we continue to the seven PM. But if the twenty-eighth, and I'm not trying to introduce a whole new conversation, while these guys are, want to conduct business, but I just wanted to put that out there.
But you're introducing a new conversation?
I am, I know.
I, I don't even know what this proposal's about, so.
Yeah, okay.
I assume you're going to say six thirty.
Six o'clock is what I heard.
Yes, that's exactly what I heard, too. So, all right, it looks like May is not going, is not going to be the time when it changes, so just, just proceed as normal.
We, we have sufficient members to make a motion and make an adaptation to that, I believe, and.
Yes, you can do it, it's just you're going to kind of be doing it out of whim, like, you know, John doesn't even know about it, so.
Right, I didn't know about it.
I didn't know about it.
Skip, Skip definitely didn't know about it.
I didn't know about it either.
All right, so then that's fine. I just, I would say proceed as normal.
Maybe not have a decision at the board meeting this time, and next time we'll have a decision on that and be able to discuss it. And if something changes, then a notice can be sent out ten days prior?
Well, or if something changes, that appointment could still be at seven or whatever, and we could do other business beforehand.
I guess you could technically do that. I would say, just for now, forget that I even brought it up, because it did, it seems like not everybody was aware of this, and just proceed with your normal motion. I know, I know. I, I wasn't sure where it stood, so I would say just proceed as normal.
Is it May twenty-eighth?
Yes. And maybe we can do June or something like that before changing the time, when we don't have any agenda items yet.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we continue this applicant to May twenty-eighth at seven o'clock at this location.
Second?
I'll say.
Vote, discussion? Vote?
No discussion.
Aye.
Aye.
The carries, one, two, three, four, five, five zero, and I don't know how you count Glenn's.
We're not counting him. He's, he's right out.
He's out completely.
Welcome back.
All right. So, motion carries will extend this till the May twenty-eighth, seven PM, at this location. Thank you very much.
And Glenn comes back.
And, and thank you, Deidra.
Are we just going to, you going to read the next case, Mr. Chair?
Oh. So sorry.
I just assumed it's me, but I can read it.
You think I pulled a fast one on you? Look what he just did to you.
Okay.
You're supposed to at least stand up and sit back down.
Jump right in, if you'd like.
I, I thought you were going to leave and, you know, come back or something. Been around once, put a different hat on.
I bill by the hours.
We'd like to welcome Mr. Griswold back onto our board. So, case C of tonight's agenda, number twenty-five dash zero zero seven, sub A, DeBerto, Lipizon, if I'm saying that correctly, hopefully, Drive, and this is a continuation. We did do a site walk a few, on April fifteenth. There are some notes about that here, and we're ready to hear more.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Christopher Berry with Berry Surveying and Engineering, representing the applicant here this evening. I really have nothing new to present. This is a two-lot subdivision that is in the town of Barrington, and we're proposing to take our access off from a road that's currently under construction, driveway access to two new homes over the town. The board met last month. There was some discussion about the project. We did go on a site walk. There was no quorum. There were very few questions asked, other than where it's going, and confirming that it's for only two homes. And then the meeting was continued to tonight, so. I'm happy to try and answer any questions the board has on this issue. This is technically an amendment to an existing subdivision. There was a footnote added to our notice of decision that said that the board would review this driveway access when it was formally proposed. Barrington has approved the subdivision, and their approval is contingent on whatever access approval this board needs to grant. As has been discussed in the past, the subdivision is under active construction. I would expect that this board might condition the driveway permit that would be required for this applicant to be conditioned on completion of the road to maybe binder course or, and/or bonded. We all agree the road needs to be built prior to these lots being built on. We're in perfect agreements with that. If the board feels that that condition of approval is adequate, then we would welcome it.
I know that in, you know, you talked about the condition that the road be completed to a binder course. There's been conversation about the applicability of the bond, the performance bond for the, for the roadway, and I know at the last meeting, it sounded like you, you, it was your interpretation that didn't apply because the, because of the change in legislature, the RSA. But that doesn't seem to be the position that the town is taking.
Define town. Town nodding hand. This board, select board, your attorney, define town. You?
It's not me, but I mean, my conversations with, with the, the, the town administrator, they've made a request for a set of expenses that the board select, or the select work can review, and that hasn't been submitted.
So then I would suggest that the board condition whatever we do here tonight on, again, receiving schedule of values, and if a bond is required to be posted, then a bond is required to be posted.
At this time, no lots have been sold?
No.
Or, no, the lots that have taken frontage off of the roadways?
No.
And? Is there, you know, I did a quick search on, on Redfin. It looked like they're for sale right now.
Everything's for sale, except for family and pets. So. There are reservations on some of the lots, and. There are reservations on some of the lots, and that's why I'm encouraging the board to condition this the way I'm encouraging them to.
Okay. I would strongly suggest that the board do that. You know, I think it would have been better if this had been handled back when the subdivision was originally approved, but we are where we are. This is an amendment to the existing one, so I think that the notice of decision can be amended, too. And, or at least a new one created specific to this, these lots. But, you know, barring anything else that came out of the site walk, or anyone else's, you know, considerations of what they've submitted, it seems like they're meeting what they need to meet in order to get approval. But there is a concern about, I shouldn't say concern, I don't want to say that, I'm not trying to get judge of scene, but just making sure that the town is covered, as they were previously allowed to, which was to have a bond, a performance bond on the completion of the roadway.
Okay, so.
Now, there's steps to do that, that's not for here, but.
But, and if the, so is the condition that the roadway is actually completed to get?
I think there's two things. One, I think the board should have a condition that the applicant submit a, a performance bond, well, a statement of values to the select board to begin the process of getting a performance bond attached to this project to protect the community. And then, there is a secondary one of staying, stating that the driveway permit cannot be issued until, you know, a binder code has been reached.
Okay. I, in response to your who question that came up, I did have an opportunity to speak to our Public Works Director, and he said, driveway permit to a road that does not exist, where his kind of rough words and description of this. He is very concerned about the, the completion or the potential completion of the road, and that leads to a lot of other questions. They did, I didn't personally speak to the town administrator about this, but there's allegations of lawyers being called in regarding the road bond and a conflict there. So, I think it might be a little premature to make a determination until we see what happens from other town boards. We have our own sets of rules here, and I think there's a lot of conflicts in our own rules about giving any sort of approval on a road that doesn't exist. We have standards for safety and fire safety, and certainly, when I, I looked at the site, I'm, this, this is, this is.
I walked out there.
There's, no, no fire truck is going to make it out to that site. No ambulance is going to make it out to that site. No road plowing equipment is going to make it to that site. No residential car is going to make it to that site. I, I think we're very premature in giving any sort of approvals on something that, on a road that doesn't exist, for one. There's also, so.
Can I, can I address that? Can we address these one at a time?
Sure, yes.
Okay, so, it's why, that comment is specifically why I would encourage the board to condition the approval on having the driveway permit not issued until we were at binder course. That's a matter of course. If this driveway were designed as part of the original subdivision and shown on that subdivision plan, we wouldn't even be here tonight. We wouldn't be discussing this. So, to, to say that we're now coming back and we're now tied to a different standard, I think that's inappropriate. But I do think it's appropriate. Your comment is a hundred percent appropriate in that you don't want, this group of people doesn't want, no group of people wants somebody getting access to a piece of property they can't actually access from a life safety standpoint. I don't want that. All I'm asking for is a condition of approval that will allow the subdivision to take place with a condition that a driveway permit is not going to be issued until that road is at binder course. And that's no different than really any other lot within this subdivision or any other subdivision that's being built currently in the town of Nottingham. So to say that you can't do anything until that road is built, that is improper, in my opinion.
Well, no other lot in that subdivision would be giving a building permit or a driveway permit at this time without there being any road in there.
And that's where, I'm not asking, I'm asking for the same exact treatment. I'm not asking you to grant us permission to start building two homes off the middle of a goat path.
How do we, how do we document that, that they can't start until?
We can't tie anything to Barrington, that's.
But we can't, we, we, we can't approve them to start that access until after the road is done, or whatever, after the road is.
So, if I may, under RSA six seventy four forty four, under the site plan review, section four, site plan review regulations of the planning board may stipulate as conditions precedent to the approval of the plat, the extent to which and the manner in which streets shall be graded and improved, and which water, sewer, and other utility mains, piping connection, or other facilities shall be installed. I think that that, the conditions that Chris is talking about fall under those precedent conditions which were approved as part of the previous subdivision. As far as this goes, it's the equivalent of asking for a driveway permit to a backlot. It's slightly different because of the fact that the parcel takes its frontage on a different road.
And town.
And town, absolutely.
Through a different plot.
Yep, not going to deny that. But, that being said, I think that being, having those conditions for any sort of work to be done makes reasonable sense.
Thank you, Glenn. Chris, I did some research on Barrington's website, minutes and stuff from the planning board in regards to Barrington and the subdivision. Can't tell you that I got them all, but was this, was the project in Barrington ever considered as a regional impact subdivision?
No. In fact, the planning board, I believe, specifically voted that it was not a regional impact.
How can that be?
Well, and Blair can chime in if I go awry. Just because we're on a town line doesn't make it a regional impact. That is one litmus test to determine whether or not a group of people like yourselves determine that it is or is not a regional impact.
And it usually happens, that, that vote usually happens early on.
It's supposed to happen before the plans even leave, even accepted as complete.
Yeah.
If, if a plan is determined to be of regional impact, the proceedings stop and that process starts and finishes prior to coming back to this.
I, I, I read, and I don't know who wrote them, I'm assuming you or your company wrote the, the verbiage for the special exception, and it, they seem like heavenly lots, because there's zero impact of that growth for Barrington, which is true. But I don't think that, that same impact for us is going to be huge for Nottingham, as I see it. There will be cars traveling, there will be trucks coming in, deliveries being made, that, that kind of stuff through Nottingham. Is, it would appear to me that none of that was taken into consideration in Barrington, except for the fact that they said we, our approval needs to be there in order for that to go forward. Is that fair to say, or?
I don't know how to answer that question. I mean, how, how planning board members, any member determines what they feel is impacts? You know, I, I think the, our approach to this is, we could take our access from Barrington, not from Route Four, and we could impact.
A lot of wetlands.
A massive wetland. And that, in my opinion, is a much larger impact than what we're proposing here. Yes, there would be two new homes that would have access through Mitchell Road and Smoke Street out to Route Four, and maybe in the other direction also. I don't view that, and I'm not saying this flippantly, I just don't view that as a monstrous impact.
It, it seems to me that if the driveway easement is approved in Nottingham, that the, the easement to the two lots that are presently considered, if I understood their map correctly, regional commercial, I think is what it's called, I don't know what that means, but the driveway, to me, seems like something that could be, could go to a manufacturing facility as a, as a suggestion, not probably correct, but.
Sure.
And we in Nottingham would have not, no, no way to impact how that impacts us.
So I'm ashamed to admit that I didn't even consider that. The regional, the regional commercial zone in the town of Barrington covers the entire parcel, but residential uses are only allowed five hundred feet off from Route Four.
Okay, kind of like ours on Route Four.
It used to be. Yeah, like, sort of in reverse, almost.
Yes, okay.
So, I did not consider that somebody would, would propose a much larger use on those than single-family homes. And it, and if the board needs to condition this access based on our proposed use for residential uses, I would encourage it. We don't intend on, the intent here is not to have a large use that creates a large impact for the town of Nottingham. The intent is two residential homes, or two residential lots, whatever the state may define that as now or in the future. And so you may need to, may want to limit, you know, Blair, I don't know how we would do that. I don't, I don't want to just blanket say no commercial activity, because if somebody has an in-home business, you know, how does that affect us? I'm not sure, but.
We don't have control.
Right, but, but, but what I do want the board to consider is not having a full-blown, isolated commercial use out on that property.
I can say from the, I was a part of the board when we originally approved that, and that was a major concern, because there wasn't a use identified for that land, and that it is a potential that, you know, the commercial use, unknown of what that commercial use would be, and, you know, hearing that it's two residences is a much different, and a much easier pill to swallow than it was going to be with, with potential commercial. That being said, you know, the town does need to protect that those uses would remain as proposed, right? I just wanted to bring up that, you know, that was one of the main reasons that we left that piece out and to be determined at a future now, that, because we didn't know the use. The applicant didn't know the use, so that was a little bit of that history.
Chris, just a question, and I don't know if you can answer this, but if there are residents, residences built out there, then the children that live there presumably would go to Barrington School rather than Nottingham. So, the Barrington bus would need to come quite a bit into Nottingham to pick them up?
No, I'm sure Barrington bus would say, we're not picking up on that road, and you need to deliver your children to the school.
Legally are required to.
But they're legally required to. And also, fire department?
So, so that was actually brought up at the site walk. I, I think, from a fire standpoint, due to mutual aid, anybody's going to respond to that fire, no matter what town. In fact, one of the former select board thought that it would be potentially Lee, based on the location of where this would be. So, I think from a life safety standpoint, it's really whoever can get there first. We have a cistern in our proposed subdivision less than three, four hundred feet from where we're proposing this, so there's water availability there, there's water availability within our subdivision, so. I was unaware that they have to pick up kids in another town, from a practical standpoint.
Well, but it's not.
I just don't, I just don't see that as a practicality.
So, Dale said that E nine one one would assign on Barrington addresses, and he couldn't speak to emergency response, and we haven't heard, heard anything back. But they would have Barrington addresses, so in theory you would think Barrington would be sort of the responding group, but because of mutual aid, it might be Nottingham.
Right, or Lee, or whoever.
Right, yes, yeah, good point, right, yes. And, I don't know, I presume it all works out in the wash, nobody's compensating anybody, it's just, we all got each other's backs kind of thing. But, my understanding is there would be given Nottingham, Barrington addresses.
By Barrington or by Nottingham?
By E nine one one. Well, I mean, they're in Nottingham, they're, they're in Barrington, so they have, they will have Barrington addresses.
But they don't even have a street, technically.
Yes, they do, Route Four. Yeah, they have frontage on a road.
Technically, it's Route Four.
I'm just, just from a practical standpoint, I'm just thinking about a situation where the emergency responders are coming along Route Four, and, you know, there's nothing but trees. And so, you know, the.
I think that's why E nine one one kind of exists at this point, is, they must have something in that system that lets them know, look, the address is this, but the access is here, is what I'm imagining.
Nail's going to be the same way. It's, it's technically going to be a Nottingham address, I would believe, and be not.
I think it's a Barrington address.
It's a Barrington address. Well, I, I hear you, and I understand, but that means they're going to have to go around and get the mail. It won't be delivered to their house.
Or go to the post office.
Or, yeah, P O Box or whatever, yeah, that, that's fine. I understand there's ways around, and I'm just saying that, there's a lot, there's a lot to this, that.
There is. I, I, I see in our site plan review regs, in our subdivision regs, and in state statutes, premature and scattered growth and development, and a lot of the conditions that we see in our own site plan review regs, calls for hydrants, fire ponds, cisterns, et cetera, to be installed, suitable access via class six or better roads to make provisions for construction, and dedication of the road to obtain safe, suitable access to the development, providing, applicant shall provide evidence of legal title and sufficientcy to any right-of-way or permanent easement. There's, it goes on, on and on and on about development, having a rational, safe transportation system, adequate services being able to be performed, fire trucks, police cars, cisterns. Where's the electricity coming from? Why are we going to have people building a house in Barrington and driving to their houses with four-wheel drive vehicles? And, you, how, how are they even getting there? How are they putting, getting a cement truck there through the woods? I think this is a premature application. I think it would be great, after seeing that, I thought we might drive up there on the site walk and see a road base or something there. Four years, there's trees and mud, there's not even any protection of the wetlands that we're walking straight across in this picture. There's no silt fencing, there's no, it's just dug up and trenched and, and a giant mess, and I don't feel, I, I'm not voting for this at this time. It's premature and too early. Come back when there's a road there, have the seller put up his road bond, and, and bring the road up to a reasonable standard that we could say, hey, there's a road there, there's. a road there, there's something there besides trees and mud. That's, that's my opinion. Um, I don't know if anybody else shares that same opinion, but we're premature. Um, I'd like to, um, potentially, um, go to, um, have any comments, and then, um, go to open, um, to our public, and then try to make some decisions on this.
First, Mr. Chair, I'd like the opportunity to respond.
Yes.
To that group of comments, not questions. So the easiest first, uh, there were no silt fences because we use mulch berm, so the site is completely surrounded by mulch berm and completely stable at this point. So I take exception to that comment. Your premature, your nexus between scattered and premature development and our request here tonight is not founded. Scattered and premature development has to do with developing areas of a town municipality that don't have any services to them whatsoever. What we're asking for is access from an approved subdivision that is being built into and across the town line to develop two additional lots. And I have suggested here tonight that no functional ability to actually build those lots be granted tonight without the road base being installed. So it would solve every single one of your comments here tonight. We are not asking for access to a piece of property and a building permit that we cannot get access to. I dare say that Dale wouldn't issue, uh, or your road agent wouldn't issue a driveway permit, and Hawkins in the town of Barrington would not issue a building permit if we didn't have proper access. That's not what we're here to discuss.
As part of their approval in Nottingham, or in Barrington for these lots, because they were, they had to get, uh, a variance and maybe a special exception or something, it's conditioned on planning board review and approval of the access, because that's in our, in our town. And it would be like the conditions, uh, you know, making sure that what they're submitting meets the minimum standards for a driveway access in terms of, you know, um, you know, just what gets built, like what the, you know, what the, the, the construction part of it looks like, um, and just general width, um, you know, the, the layout of it meets our standards. That's really what we're reviewing, it's, it's not the approval of, of lots. So, um, you know, I understand what, you know, the chairman's saying, but again, the, the purview of what this board is, is really just the access. And, and as Dirk pointed out, and as noted on the original notice decision, it was contemplated that something might go in here. That's why it was said that they needed to come back, and that's why we're doing an amendment instead of a, a new application.
Why does this need to be, uh, approved before the road's done? That's, I mean, that's, I mean, I don't, I don't mind the driveway approved and all that, but why does it need to be approved, um, before the road is done? Why do we have to say okay to this driveway before the road is built?
So we can finalize our subdivision process, the road gets built, and then the lots can be sold and, and developed.
They just wants to be all done at once for efficiency purposes.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's kinda like, why, why wouldn't you, why would, why would you go ahead and build a road without a subdivision approval? And it's very similar to that line of thinking.
So if I can just bring up one thing, um, kind of what Blair alluded to, um, in RSA 67453, um, which is the statute about land affected by municipal boundaries, section four, no plat or plan showing lands or streets in more than one municipality and state shall be deemed approved for the purpose of this title unless it has been approved by the planning boards of all included municipalities. In addition, no plat or plan showing land whose sole street access or sole maintained street access is or planned to be via private road or class four, five, or six highway located in an adjoining municipality shall be deemed approved for purposes of this title unless it has been approved by the planning board, if any, of the adjoining municipality, provided however that the sole issue which may be addressed or regulated by the adjoining municipality shall be the adequacy of such street access and the impact of the proposal upon it. As far as I'm reading that, um, we know that the street has sufficient access because it is part of a approved subdivision. We have discussed the impact.
Hang, hang on, that point. It's an approved subdivision, but what assurance is there that it's ever gonna be completed? Is, is kind of the question here. And there's probably a lot of subdivisions out there that have been approved that have never been built out, and this has been here for four years, and it's not built out, there's not an indication that it's moving forward, so, um, the, I think you also read in there that it's, um, access shall be from a class five or six, five or better?
Via a private road or class four, five, or six highway.
Okay. And so I'm not sure this is a private road or class four, five, or six highway at this time.
It's, it, it would be built as a road to be accepted, which is private until it is accepted, at which time it is then class five. So it meets two of those.
All right, I'm sorry to. Um, so the second point of that, um, the adequacy of the street access, which I think that Chris has identified, and the impact of the proposal upon it. My major concerns regarding it are, um, you know, as I've stated, between the fire and the school bus and, you know, postage and everything like that, the addressing, um, but I think that that is the, I think that's the best way for the access to happen to those lots, um, rather than going through the massive amount of wetlands.
I agree with what Skip said earlier about, there probably should have been regional impact, because this impacts more than just Barrington.
I don't disagree.
So, I don't know if that's correctable or not, or?
Not at this point. And, and again, DRIs are for things that are bigger than just budding a town. It, it's for something that, you know, is gonna have massive, you know, ripple down, you know, trickle-down effect.
Well, it does, it trickles down into Nottingham. It's not, it's only two lots, but they're still trickle-down.
And we don't gain. We only lose.
And we have obligations to provide plowing, road services, town services, um, fire services, ambulances, and.
Can we talk mind over road?
Huh?
No.
We, we do have a couple of sections also, uh, in our subdivision and, um, site plan about, um, access, driveway access design standards, and, um, I don't see that this road at this moment fits those, and I can't help but wonder why a continuance to a time where they've put the road bond up, they've got the road proposal in place so that, you know, this can move forward. It's, it's like building a house before you can put the foundation in. Well, you gotta start at the bottom here, and, and we don't have a foundation, we don't have a road, we have no access there. All, all these talk about shared access, improvements, two-way traffic flow, right-of-ways, rights of passage, um, there's obligations on the town to approve this, that, you know, what if these people say, hey, we want this road to be plowed, we want, um, you know, we have a fire emergency, uh, what do we have to do as a town to provide these houses, these services that are accessed from our town?
As long as it's a private road, they're responsible for the maintenance of the road, so that's there. Emergency response, we've covered, and the utilities will be provided as they would be in any roadway.
Right.
So I, I, I feel like issues are being brought up that have already been addressed. This is an approved subdivision. You're talking about review of an access point, that's 60 feet wide by 60 feet long, give or take. And I think issues are being brought up that are not germane to your purview at this time, and I just, I caution the board.
Yeah, I mean.
Respectfully and humbly.
I think, I can't see why we could say no as long as the condition is met, that the road has been at this, to whatever standard before they can build on it. Same rules that would apply to a lot in Nottingham.
Or any other lot in this subdivision.
Well, yeah, those, the other ones would be in Nottingham.
Was there a bond posted for the construction of this road?
Not yet, no.
That's one of the things that we, we were talking about a minute ago, that I, I've been trying to figure out how to word it, and I think.
That's still separate, I think, from the access.
Yes, but I think it's, you know, I, I think that it does, you know, it's been brought up as a concern. I think the applicant has shown a willingness to make it a conditional part of this, and I think we should take that opportunity in this decision, if the board votes in the affirmative, to condition it with that.
If we do a, you know, conditional driveway or performance bond, or whatever we're gonna be doing, is there any way to, um, condition it with a change of use? Like to protect the town on a change of use of those two lots?
I am suggesting that, uh, the access, uh, you know, the granting of the access is limited to residential use only and of only two lots.
Yes. And if there is a change of use, then that change of use would happen in, um, Barrington, right?
Yeah, and it would.
But it's already its own commercial.
But it would happen in Barrington, but they're obligated to notify you.
Right.
And there could be an argument made that we'd right be about, right back in the situation where the use of that access would be reviewed by this town. Because the access to the use comes through here, so we'd almost be back, right back in the same situation.
Because today, we're under the impression, it was stated by the applicant, that there are gonna be two residential house, houses.
Yes.
House lots.
House lots, yes.
And this driveway access is two more lots on, I don't know, how many lots total was the?
14.
So 14, so a 16-lot subdivision versus a 14-lot subdivision. I guess that's what I wanna protect the town on, is that it's not gonna become a 14-lot and two commercial lots, that all of the commercial traffic and services come through those residential areas.
So, yeah, I mean.
Is there a way to protect the town with that language, change of use, or however the determination would be?
I am, yes, I think we can condition that, um, I hadn't thought about changing of a, of a use, we can, I could add in some language here, I'm trying to play with something right now, but yeah, I could, I could present you all with something in.
Yeah, I think that would be.
That would, that would include, um, you know, access, it's right now loosely written as access, uh, over th, this driveway is, uh, for residential use only and only two lots, with no future subdivision. I could add in there something about, uh, I mean, I'm saying it's residential use, but.
Yeah, I, I think that that's comparable, at least in my opinion, it, it's for that use, because the statement is residential.
It doesn't imply anything else.
So is it, do residential 16 apartment buildings in the commercial zone allowable?
Single family, or is there?
And do we have even any right or say on what the other town can do?
I mean, we have a right of what could cross that.
Right.
We, we have no right of what the other town does. We can limit it to two single-family residential lots.
Access to two.
Right, access, access to two.
I'm fine with that. I, I think the only thing, just wanna be very clear here, state allows for ADUs, so.
That's what I was speaking about.
But it's still part of a.
That's still part of a single-family residential.
That's accessory to a single-family use, so I just, all right, I just don't wanna be hung up if.
Yep, no, that's already.
All right. Other than that, I, I'm, we're okay with that.
Yeah, I've got three.
Can we, do we want that lang, you trying to vet out that language right now?
Yeah, I've got three at the moment. Or do we wanna send this to our legal counsel and also talk to our town manager, who I believe their applicant's having conversations with, according to our road agent about the road bonding, and they're having legal issues about that?
I wanna get public comment, too.
So I, I think in terms of, uh, posting a schedule of values and posting a bond, whatever the typical course of business is for subdivisions, needs to be met. I don't know that it really needs to go too far beyond that.
What was that, I'm sorry, that last?
Whatever the process is for schedule of values in the town of Nottingham and bonding that takes place, needs to be met. I mean, it's that, it's, it's that plain to me.
It is, but it hasn't been, and it's been since, you know, 2021 that the project, you know, construction started without it ever being in place.
Yeah, I, I underst, I understand the pitfalls of the applicant.
Yeah.
So I guess that's why we would condition this. If those things don't happen, this access doesn't happen.
All right. It says, "The board under the advice of the town engineer designated shall set the amount and type of performance guarantee prior to the final approval of subdivision." Uh, it's a performance bond. Uh, "The developer shall post such guarantee with the town prior to starting any construction." "The basis for determining the performance guarantee shall be 100% of the costs necessary to complete, uh, installation work as conditioned in the board's approval." "The proposed cost shall be submitted by the applicant, however, the amount shall be reviewed and approved by the town's designated agent and the select board." So that's what we're looking for. You're calling it a scheduled values, doesn't be, it isn't specific, it just says the proposed cost. So we'll call that a scheduled values, needs to be submitted to the town for review and approval.
No problem. And that's the thing that becomes concerning, is because that wasn't met, what is stopping them from going forward and starting to get those building permits if we give a conditional approval? You know, that's, I mean, the conditional approval's conditional approval, but Barrington does their thing.
Because you don't issue a driveway permit. Without a driveway permit from the town of Nottingham, you cannot have a building permit in the town of Barrington.
And the town of Barrington knows that your review and approval is a condition of their approval. So they're gonna look at, you know, these, these three conditions, right? They're gonna wanna know that they're met, and their building inspector's gonna follow up with you. And again, as Chris said, it, you know, we're also instructing our road agent to not issue a driveway permit. So I think, I agree with you, and that's why I'm writing these down, because things have not been done in the past.
Right.
I agree with you, but this is, I think, a chance to capture it all.
Yes, please.
Yes, I agree with you, yes. We shouldn't have to, it should have been, it should be done, and, and what was, that, well, the original approval should be enough to get a performance bond, but here's another opportunity, so.
In, in Nottingham, sorry, in Barrington's approval notice of decision here, um, they are calling for, uh, application, applicant to provide a letter from Town of Nottingham's planning board, or the designee, that the Nottingham planning board approves the residential lots that address the covenants for the subdivision off of Lipizan. So I don't know what covenants these are, um, this was not where their covenants of the subdivision that cover 14 lots, but don't extend out to other lots that are not in this town in the previous life.
Planning board does not review covenants.
It's in Barrington's approval. I'm just reading what their conditions are. "These conditions were set forth by Barrington Board of Adjustment to include anything done with this property would require planning and/or zoning approval from the town of Nottingham in conjunction with the planning board of Barrington." Uh, there's other requirements, monumentation, um, I didn't study these. "Street view signage shall be 911 compliant." Well, there's no street to put a sign on yet.
I, I think that we're starting to stray a little bit from.
Do you wanna get the public, public input at this point?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Let's do that, please. So we're gonna open up this meeting, it's, uh, 9:50 for, uh, public comment.
8:50.
8:50, sorry, thank you. I'm in a different time zone, if anybody would like to come forward and speak for or against this, um, project.
We're gonna close the public comment then.
Okay, we're gonna close this at, uh, nine.
Eight.
8:50 and a half. Open back up.
That clock is wrong.
It, it is.
It's eight.
It's 8:51.
That's right, actually, the clock.
Yeah, it's 8:50, yeah, that's right.
It's 8:51.
If you'd started at six, it'd be an hour sooner. And we'd still be here. And we'd still be here.
So this has always bothered me sitting on the board. The conditional approvals, I can understand, I don't necessarily like them. But if we were to deny it tonight because of the fact that there isn't a road in Nottingham, and therefore we can't provide a driveway permit at this point in time, and do it without prejudice in some fashion, what is the difference between doing that and doing the conditional approval?
Well, I would argue quite profusely that your first recommendation is not legal. So that's tantamount to saying that-
Which part is not legal?
Uh, denial based on the fact that the road is not built. And that's tantamount to saying that you would deny the rest of this subdivision, or any other subdivision within the town of Nottingham, based on the fact that the road's not built and we can't issue a driveway permit. That's the same exact thing that you just described here.
Even though in our documentation, it indicates a driveway goes to a lot in Nottingham, presumably.
So, so the planning board granted us a subdivision approval-
Yep.
For the, for the project, conditioned on the fact that we would build a subdivision out. What you're asking, or inferring is that that road would need to be built prior to us recording a plan. Why would we build a road if we didn't have an approval?
I'm not sure I followed that. The approved plan exists already, if you will. What doesn't exist is the capability for Barrington's plan to be approved, and they need us to do that. And so if that's truly the case, and either way it requires the capability of the road to be there, I'm not, not figuring out the difference.
Lot five, lot five within the subdivision. That lot currently has no roadway built to it. None of the lots in our subdivision have roadway built to it. Planning board approved the subdivision contingent on the roads being built. Otherwise, you'd have fourteen homes or twelve homes built in the middle of the woods with no access to them.
Right.
So it's, it's a question of, this approval provides us access, and you're providing that access under the state law that Glenn has read now twice,
Yep.
with the conditions that the applicant be compliant with your current bonding process, that a road be built to binder course before driveway permit be issued, so that that access can actually be effectuated. Otherwise, there is no access.
Yeah, I don't think there's, that would be any homeowner or developer, construction company that would have the, want the risk to go build a road and then go for approvals. There's just too much-
Not-
expenditure to do that.
And not to mention, you would run afoul of multiple state laws regarding things like wetland crossings and disturbance of areas and things like that.
I'm not suggesting that at all. I'm suggesting that the fact that we have a, if you will, an approved subdivision in Nottingham that identifies driveways as to where they're going to be on the plan, and the way I understand it, if it's on the plan, that's the way the driveways are going to be. This one's not on the plan, and therefore, and I know now it's an amendment, okay, I understand. But there's still that, that connection that we have in town that the driveway goes between basically a Nottingham road and the buildable area. In Nottingham, presumably, because that's where the building area, buildable area is shown on our plaque. So I'm not su-, I don't, I don't know state law, and I've heard it and that kind of stuff, and I agree the capability exists. But in this particular case, it doesn't appear that we have met all of those requirements at this point in time. And I'm just wondering what the difference is between disapproving it now and and waiting for the road, the other road, Captain Smith Road, or whatever it is, to become a Nottingham road.
It's sort of an extension of the existing, the original approval. Any lot that you, that's created has to show a driveway.
Right.
Right? That doesn't mean that's the final location of the driveway, as long-
Not two.
Sorry?
Not two.
What do you mean?
Just one.
Permitted to have two driveways, if you have enough frontage, if you have site distance.
It's the same as, it's the same as having a loop driveway, you know, it's, you've got two points of access there.
Yeah, we, I don't know, this plan doesn't show it, but from what I could tell, there was only like two hundred feet of frontage on that particular lot anyway. I don't know.
Yes.
Yep.
And to have two driveways on one lot, you need three hundred feet of frontage in our ordinance.
I mean, those types of things are in there. And this would be a second thing. I'm assuming what you said, Blair, that it's sixty by sixty or something is-
That's what I measured, I'm surprised, I figured it wasn't like fifty by fifty, but I swear it was like six-
A normal right of way is like fifty feet.
What's that?
A normal right of way is fifty feet.
Exactly, that's why I was a little surprised, but I swear I did it on a scale.
It looked like sixty.
I think we're at a junction here where we're kind of going in circles, and we, we're trying to interpret state laws and maybe act behind, beyond our pay grade, if you will. I think we should consider, whatever that is. We should consider perhaps sending this to legal counsel for their interpretation, if there's a-
We did that, though.
We did that.
We had a whole meeting on that.
We did, and there was a determination that it's, that we can only discuss the access.
Right.
That was certainly prior to seeing that there is no access there.
She knew that there was no, she knew there was no road there.
If our ordinance requires three hundred feet of frontage for a single driveway, for a, for a second driveway, they need to make this driveway match meld into the other driveway.
I don't see what you're saying, I don't understand.
So they can't, they can't issue two driveway permits, well, we shouldn't hurt our ordinances, issue two driveway permits on two hundred feet of frontage.
Where is that?
I believe that's in our site plan review regs or subdivision regs.
That's, that's for the purpose of meeting zoning.
Right.
The lots are created, the lots exist. Because they, they have frontage, and what they don't have, they were granted a variance for in the town of Barrington. The question here is, under the RSA, which has, you know, property that's land that's in two towns, and one town is the access town, that's what they get the review, is the access, and that's it.
Right, so if the access, if we should only be allowing one driveway in two hundred feet, then it should be through this driveway here and up.
But that's a zoning thing, we're not considering zoning, the zoning here, the question here is about access. It's not a question of zoning. I mean, we can look at the subdivision regulations on what the driveway standards are, but I don't know that we're trying to determine if they have frontage in area for the purposes of creating a buildable lot when that was already approved in the town of Barrington.
Yeah, because their frontage is on Route four.
Yes.
Right, right, but we're still talking about the single, the lot is in Nottingham that now has two driveways.
You're talking about the lot that's on the cul-de-sac, correct?
Yeah, correct, that, that, the whole cul-de-sac-
So you're saying it invalidates that lot?
Is in Nottingham. Because the cul-de-sac does not go to the line, this frontage goes from here over to wherever here, that's only two hundred feet. So there should only be one driveway in that two hundred foot section.
Based on what?
Nobody's actually read that regulation yet.
That's what we're looking for.
I don't know that that exists.
That's what they just said.
They would need to be in subdivision, not in site.
No, but it's in zoning.
It's in zoning.
I remember.
Well, if we could find it and read it, that'd be great.
That's what I'm looking for.
That's to create a lot in-
Right, but-
Create a lot.
Right, so we have a lot, we have a lot in Nottingham. They're just asking to cut through that same lot, well, why would we give a secondary access through the one lot that's already there? When they should just use the same driveway.
I thought it was interesting that the way this is described is a driveway easement, which is inappropriate terminology, but and I'm going to try and find it, but I believe we can't have two driveways in a lot, and so
That's what I understood, too, when I said that last meeting.
If it was described as an easement, that's something different, I believe.
So we got to change the name every week, you know, they, you don't have a driveway in town, but you have an easement in town, and they require a driveway for a building permit?
As a real estate agent, you're the difference between an access driveway and an easement.
There is a difference.
And you know what that is, so. You know, because the easement, it's not just a driveway access easement, it's also for utilities. Right, so it's more than just a drive, driveway easement. It's for utilities as well.
Well, there's utilities and drainage and access that are all not there.
Because I thought there was only one curb cut, basically, that's where I was getting to last meeting, with a single curb cut.
That's what I thought, but
I mean, I don't know the ordinances.
So, so do we want to- If I may.
Go ahead.
Um, in the zoning ordinances, lot sizes, no lot shall be less than two acres in area, each lot shall have a minimum contiguous frontage of two hundred feet, including a curb cut for approved access, except with the extent to regard to frontage of backlots approved in accordance with Article four, Section T. And each single parcel of land is required to contain a driveway curb cut within the required minimum frontage. The required driveway may either be a single or common shared driveway serving no more than two residences.
Doesn't say we can't have more than one.
No more than two. Sorry, no more than two, so that you can't have-
No, it doesn't actually say that. It says each single parcel of land is required to contain a driveway within the required minimum frontage. And the required driveway may either, may be either a single or common shared driveway serving no more than two residences.
Single or common shared driveway. Maybe a single or common shared driveway. So that says there can only be one driveway.
No, it does not say.
That does not say that.
It does, a single?
Meaning you can have one curb cut that either functions as driveway to a single-family home or two single-family homes. Does not limit the number of curb cuts to one or two.
I do believe that is found in either site plan or subdivision regs, but it would take a-
I don't know, I don't know.
A hour to read through all those to get to that point, and do we want to sit here and try to learn our-
It also says frontage definition area kind of requirements, each lot shall have a minimum contiguous frontage of two hundred feet, including curb cut for approved access. It doesn't say cuts, except to the extent with regard to frontage of backlots approved in accordance with Article four, Section T. When I read that the first time, knowing Barrington created these lots as backlots, it, all of a sudden, it's like, we need to put Nottingham in our regulations everywhere, I guess, but it, it's just, I, I, it just seems to me that it is not time to be doing this at this point in time. But I understand totally what the conditional approval is, I just, I don't underst-, timing-wise, I don't see what the difference is.
So you're saying you'd like to make a motion to continue this, to look at further detail to a later date? Or deny, or to accept, with verbiage that we have to conjure up out of air here today, recovering legal issues?
I have it.
Okay, you have it.
I've got language we can use.
There we go, what would it be?
So it would be applicant submits a schedule of values to select board within thirty days of notice of decision. No driveway permit shall be issued by town of Nottingham until construction of-
This is, I'm sorry, going backwards, we're, we're asking for them to put up a bond, or just a schedule of values for the bond? And no bond, no money, no guarantees that it's going to-
Schedule of values submitted to the select board gets the process going to get us to the performance guarantee. No driveway permit shall be issued by town of Nottingham until construction of Lipizan Drive and Stone Gray Road each reach binder course as verified by the town's engineer. And the access drive is for residential use only. And we could, we could say and ADUs if we want.
Say, single-family residential.
Yeah. Single family, yes, so single-family residential, yeah.
Can you put language in there that say that the driveway is limited to single-family residential and permitted uses? Or, you know-
And accessory uses.
Or accessory uses, that was the term I was looking for, yes, thank you. Not permitted uses, but-
Right, because if Barrington changes their permits, then-
Right, exactly, no, accessory uses, I believe is the term I was looking for.
Yes, driveway is limited to single-family residential uses and accessory uses.
Could you read that from the top?
Applicant submits a schedule of values to select board within thirty days of notice of decision. No driveway permit shall be issued by the town of Nottingham until construction of Lipizan Drive and Stone Gray Road reach binder course as verified by the town's designee, meaning CMA who's under contract. And then the last one, driveway is limited, the use of, driveway, driveway is limited to single-family residential uses and accessory uses.
Can we add in there, bond, bonding is required after binder course? There's a road bond, if we're, bond for other improvements, fire cisterns that might be on the road, electrical conduits that might go in there.
No, 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 that's way beyond. That's the point of the performance bond.
Right.
It covers all of that. We just, we got to get ourselves there.
We say we had a performance bond in your-
Yes, well, yeah, because the schedule of values gets us to the, to that stage.
Can you read C again, please?
The third one?
Yeah.
Driveway is limited to single-family residential uses and accessory uses.
Can we change that to driveway is limited to two residential dwellings?
To, to single-family residential.
Okay.
Make sure it says single-family.
It does, yeah, yes, yes, two single-family residential uses.
But we're units, or- Two single-family residential dwellings?
We, yeah.
The only reason I'm being nitpicky about that is because of the fact that, you know, we have those definitions in our rules.
Right.
We don't have units.
Right, well, that's why I changed it to dwellings.
Yeah, we have no fair dwellings, but we're-
Putting conditions in Barrington here.
We're not, I don't, I don't believe we are, I believe we're giving conditions on that access.
Okay.
So that they're free to build whatever they want over in Barrington, according to Barrington's rules, but if they are building something that is not a single-family dwelling, then our approval, our approval vanishes.
Right.
They'll have to go around.
Wouldn't be grandfathered in by then, though?
No, no grandfather.
No, because that's, that's the point of the conditioning.
Right.
So, yeah, we have-
I hate to do this to you one more time, can you read that from the top?
So we have dwelling unit, comma, single-family dwelling unit, comma, two-family dwelling, so we are calling them dwelling units, but I use dwellings, so we should be covered. Applicant submits schedule of values to select board within thirty days of notice of decision. No driveway permit shall be issued by the town of Nottingham until construction of Lipizan Drive and Stone Gray Road- until construction of Lipizan Drive and Stone Gray Road reach binder course, as verified by the town's designee. Driveway is limited to two single family residential dwellings and accessory uses.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the amendment to the previously approved planning board case with conditions as stated. He just made the complete statement.
Right.
I'm not going to be able to repeat that, but that's.
So noted. Is.
And I'll second that. Blair, did you? Did the schedule of payments and stuff submitted to the BOS?
Yes, it's submitted to select board.
Okay.
Because that's how the process is. We read that earlier. Yeah, that's how it's supposed to go.
So some discussion. I, I do have a quick question of everybody's interpretation. Six seventy-four forty-one RSA is about building on properties having street access and it should be, that street shall be open and accepted with legal status or corresponds to its location within a city official city map, which it's not on any map right now. If it's a class six highway.
I disagree with that, just before you move on.
Okay, thank you. That the, the governing body gets to review. But what, ultimately what this boils down to is that in, in these cases where people are building on what is, looks like a backlot or a lot without proper road frontage, that there is a waiver of liability given to the town. That we don't have a liability, you know, if we don't provide plowing or some other access, fire safety on our roads. They can't get a school bus up there, somebody gets injured, et cetera, on our road getting to this house, that we have a certain degree of liability. What are your thoughts about the applicant providing a waiver of liability on this road?
Are you talking about a class six waiver liability?
Yes.
That's fine.
Okay. We should add that to our conditions.
Please.
Yes. I, I personally don't think it's necessary. I don't think it's congruent with the state law that you just read.
It, it's.
But.
If I.
But it doesn't, that's fine.
It's not, it's not going to be applicable since this will be built to a class five standard anyways. So it's, it's, your point is, is that's why he's willing to accept it. And, and also, our attorney would have pointed it out in the three-page memo that she submitted to us. She wouldn't have missed that amongst all the other things that she covered. But if you want it in there and the board agrees, I will put it in there.
If I can point out in six seventy-four forty-one, section one A, oh, I'm sorry, one B two. In section one, it says that no building shall be erected on any lot within any part of immunitas pality, nor shall a building permit be issued, yada, yada, yada. Until such time as the class five or better highway corresponding to its location or lines with a street shown on the official map or a street on a subdivision plat approved by the planning board. The planning board approved the plan. The road is recorded as part of the recorded subdivision plan. It exists. Regardless of whether or not it's been built.
So Mr. Chair, there's a motion and a second.
And there was discussion. Shall we vote then?
Call the vote?
We'll call for a vote.
Aye.
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 Nay. Okay.
Thank you for the law lesson tonight, and I appreciate everybody's time.
Thank you, Chris.
Scoop of yours.
That was a fun one.
Yeah.
Very interesting.
The conditions. The conditions.
All we can do.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Ben.
Blair, are you gonna send your verbiage in to somebody?
That's all I'm doing right now. I'm gonna send it over to Alana because she's gonna put the notice of decision together.
Thank you, because I don't think I wrote that whole thing down.
No, that's why I'm here.
So thank, thank you.
Every once in a while, I show my value.
Yeah. Ah, every time you come here, you show some value.
That's why I wasn't gonna recite that all over.
Yeah.
Whatever he said.
And that's the way to do it. It's, it honestly is. Because it's in the, it'll be in the minutes, you know, the recording.
It'll be in the minutes. I'll have to keep playing it back to write down every word.
Yeah, I know.
Hey, Blair.
Is it something that you, are you working with us, the planning?
For what? Oh, well, it doesn't, so affect you guys specifically, but it affects our overall budget. You're paying for my services. And as far as I can tell, it's basically one for one covered. Like, it's not like we're eating anything per se. So I don't think it affects you.
It affects the performance of all of us working.
I don't think so.
Next applicant, ready?
Just one quick thing. In the zoning ordinances, we do have a single family dwelling unit.
Alright.
So if you want to put that language.
Yeah, I vote single family dwelling. Our definition says dwelling unit, comma, single family, dwelling unit, comma, two family.
Right, right.
Yeah, so we call them dwelling units, is what we call them. I don't think a court would ever get upset if you called it dwelling and not dwelling unit. But yes, I did edit it just to do that.
Yep.
Just noting.
This is another business, case twenty-five dash zero zero five conceptual design with Mr. Bassett. Welcome.
Welcome, Kevin Bassett, One-on-One Shore Drive. So, we're here for informational. What was just passed out to you is a road survey that was done after we petitioned for a low road layout. And the intent of that is to go to the Board of Selectmen and get their, it's not their approval, but it's their, their method of, of proceeding it along and to eventually get it to a warrant article to the votes. To accept these roads that were identified on this map. So that we want to do, or Ellen was thinking that we might have a joint board meeting so that the butters, and there's well over thirty butters, could actually come to that meeting if, if so desired. The second part of that is what we're here for, is we just submitted a minor subdivision plan, which I believe you have already in your packet.
Oh, they only have your conceptual plan that they, that you gave me. I haven't issued, I haven't handed out the actual subdivision application.
Oh, okay.
It's sufficient to talk about.
So we do have a couple copies of that.
Because you're not here for that.
We're here for the conceptual.
Yes.
Right.
Right. There's nothing really changed. The conceptual meeting is, yeah, we kind of, we submitted for the conceptual meeting and then while we were waiting, we submitted the formal application for the subdivision. And the reason being was because we wanted to get some clarification about the road names and some of the other issues regarding the acceptance of the roads and how we address them on his subdivision plan moving forward.
So this is an opportunity to get that plan in front of you and ask for any inputs back prior to coming to a formal subdivision approval meeting, either on or after the Board of Selectmen meeting, so we could do this all at once, is the desirement so that the butters are essentially seeing both, both activities per se. So I'll, I'll give it to you. We submitted with a couple of waivers?
We did. Again, we're not, we're not here for that. Yeah.
Not yet.
Yeah, we, we saw a conceptual for splitting your lot on the north, north side, I believe, north side of the road.
Yes.
And that's it. So it's the context of exploring where the roads are and what their names are and, you know, is way outside of that, what I saw and I, I believe.
Oh, yes, yes, I agree. We're just asking for any inputs back so that.
On the conceptual, we saw there, there, it showed the road, the lot to the north side cut into two parts, which looks like lots one and two on this plan, even though there's several more plans or several more lots here. And on a conceptual review, I would say that we will probably like to see some, that we, I, I know this is not all swamp, but I'm just gonna say this, you know, that, you know, that this is not, you know, fifty-nine acres of, of wetlands and swamp, that there's adequate building area to, you know, support a lot. The thirty thousand square foot lot envelope within the context of the zoning, some other requirements should probably be made there. This is, again, a non-binding meeting. We're just, you know, talking openly about this. I don't know if other people on the board have ideas of other requirements that would be applicable to the conceptual of the two lots that we saw. And I, I'm not prepared to talk about roads and it's very long. We can be here for days, weeks, years.
One of the issues we're gonna allow me to touch base on the roads can, when this town accepted the road, effectively subdivided Kevin's property into five different parcels. So when we submitted this conceptual subdivision, we have them listed as twenty-five one, twenty-five two. Those are probably incorrect because they have not, there's been no change in the tax or assessing maps. So as far as the lot designation, how would we approach that? Is that something that we can deal with at the time we have the official hearing?
So my understanding is that everything up through April of twenty twenty-four has been reviewed and gone through and submitted to CAI, and they should be sending back revised tax maps like soon.
Okay, so we have not, we have not seen those yet, at least.
I don't know if she's gotten them back yet. So I would check with that woman, I believe her name is Nancy.
Nancy?
Yeah, I would check with her to see the status of that. I was helping her out with it. This is why I know it pretty well.
Okay.
And then she's gonna, once she gets that back, then she'll catch up to where we are in current day, day form. But I imagine it would capture this, because I know we were talking about these roads. This was one of the impetuses, is, is everything that was accepted out here and how that changed things. So.
I see everything tied together.
Yeah.
Both things are all tied together because without the roads and effectively subdividing, then we're looking at, you know, it's, it's all tied together in my mind. You know, that's, that's kind of, we just want to get guidance to make sure we're proceeding on the correct path with this. That's what the conceptual is for. We can set aside the road name issue till after, but how will you address the issues with this conceptual subdivision? Far as monumentation goes, Channel Lane is exceedingly wavy and curvy. To monument every single angle, point and curve is gonna, it's a significant undertaking. One of the things we were hoping to do is basically set what we consider tight courses at the, at the corners where the new lot lines intersect what is to be the edge of the proposed maintenance easement, which is shown on the concept plan. If that's something you think we should approach with the select board and deal with that then, I think that's something we could do. I don't know if Kevin agrees with me or not.
A survey of some, some, at some point, we don't, you know, the road is, we're accepting, the way the roads were accepted is like you're accepting these ten roads wherever they existed in the world, so nobody really knows where they are. It would certainly be very prudent to have, you know, know where the front boundary of a lot is and, you know, where the road is located and survey showing that. Other camp roads, I live on one, I, I can tell you, you know, there's some monumentation on it, but not a lot.
Yep.
But I also hear about different roads where, you know, somebody goes to divide or do something and the road is going through the middle of the lot. So now they have two lots and it's on a smaller lot, not of the scale, so that, you know, should the road be moved over? Or is there a lot, what, what's happened? It's kind of a mess. We can.
A little bit, yeah.
I think we do, Mr. Selectmen? Do we need to have a survey showing where this, these roads are?
These roads are bound for these lots.
Right, they're, as, as bound for the lots, we're gonna.
Not necessarily.
And there was one done and recorded at the registry of deeds back, last April. And the only issue with that, it was some of the road was an incorrect notation of one of the roads. So that survey has been filed at the registry. And we referenced that survey on the conception, on the concept plan.
And which road was that?
That was what, on the original survey that was recorded, what is now Channel Lane, was listed as Cove Road, which was once Lamprey Drive at one time.
So on your, on this plan here, it's Lamprey Drive, Cove Road, and it comes out to Dam Road.
Correct, yeah. And then we, we recently changed that.
Dolph Dam Road is that first one, not.
Yes. So, yeah, Dolph, Kevin, Dan comes in.
It says Channel Road in red.
When the, oh, sorry. When those roads were accepted, were they accepted as, they were accepted as class five?
Right, yeah.
Town roads. Were they simply as easements or were they taken in fee by the town?
No, no deeds.
Accepted, they're accepted as town roads.
So, the reason that.
There's been no fee.
The, the reason I'm bringing that up is because if, if it is simply an easement, which most right-of-ways in New Hampshire are, then the lots were not separated. They simply have an easement passing through them.
The, that has been already vetted.
Yeah.
And it's been decided that these are now lots.
Kevin's already been.
We.
This is my fifth or sixth time here.
Okay.
Yeah.
The, the road cutting through it creates several lots.
They're, they're big enough.
Was, was previously discussed and.
Fair.
So as far, I was not here for that.
So.
So the, it's, this is really just a conceptual subdivision of the property into two lots, or is it three lots? So you'll.
It's just the two lots north.
On the north portion of what is Channel Lane, what was once Lamprey Drive, being proposed to subdivide into two large lots.
Right. So, so these, the other four lots or whatever it is are basically already defined because of the road. It's just separation of this one bigger parcel.
That's right.
Correct.
So you're, you're dividing one lot into two?
That's correct.
Yep.
Kevin, down in the Lamprey Drive area, I think John was addressing the fact that some of those roads down there that are still Lamprey Drive, I guess it goes off in many different directions, did have other names. Snow Lane, was that one of them? Or was that in his area or something?
No, that's always been Lamprey.
That's always been?
Correct.
And we want to keep it that scattered mess?
Because that still looks, right, that still doesn't look like it conforms to nine one one because it's like, it looks like it's a loop with a shoot-off.
That shoot-off is part of that lot and, and it was made many, many years ago. But that is not Lamprey. Lamprey is the big circle that goes around.
Okay.
So. So that lot, that little cutoff can be, can be nullified. It can be blocked off. And Lamprey and nine one one is still good with, with it.
So, so this piece here is not accepted as a town road? Is that what you're saying?
This little piece right next to the L and Lamprey is not.
Between like Thompson and Owens?
No, that's all, that's all private.
That's a private road. That section, that section.
Thompson and Porter, is that what you mean?
No, not the Thompson Porter piece. That I see as private. But the one that goes past Owens and Bates and Braun and Dion.
Goes north.
That heads north.
Yeah.
Right.
Yep, that, that to me is part of Lamprey and no one's been able to tell me different.
Okay, because what I would propose is that from Dolph Dam to that dead end be channel and then Lamprey just be the U piece.
Well, that's what you can address at the board.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I don't know how we do that, but that's what I would propose from a nine one one perspective.
On our roads, I'm on the lake on Mindle Road and we, they, the town came in. On our roads, I'm on the lake on Mindle Road, and we, they, the town came in and changed, because it branched off just like this in the couple spots and adopted a couple new road names, which made us, required us to change everything in our entire lives.
Yeah, I know, I know, it's very difficult.
But it, it's for nine-one-one purposes. That's, that's how that was done. So that might have been set by nine-one-one more than the select board.
Yeah, but, I mean, this doesn't make sense in a nine-one-one perspective because of its, the panhandle thing.
So this will be, I would. I was gonna say you might wanna check with Nancy and see how it was submitted.
Yeah.
And, and I'm, and now I'm wondering, I'm assuming she did her due diligence to figure out what justifies whatever names or whatever they're laying, all that stuff out at, so.
Did you send your survey plan of the, this, it showed the existing location of the roads or whatever, the easements? Did that, did that get to the town also, so they could try to tie that into the mapping?
I know Ellen's had this for the year or so, it's been.
Okay.
Deeded, or, yeah.
So they have a copy?
Yeah, just double check.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know where that, where it landed.
Since it was recorded, not deeded, sorry.
So. And on the, you, you mentioned the vetted subdivision bisected by the roads. Was that in a conceptual or was that an actual meeting that had a vote?
That was, that was initiated in a, in a, in a conceptual. Planning board took it to the town attorney. They got a, an answer, I, we come back again, and it was the previous chair who gave us a verbal, and I believe Ellen has it written, meeting, meeting minutes.
We, we should revisit that just to make sure that, that if it happened on a conceptual, it's a non-binding, so I, I don't. I, I was here at that meeting, so I, I just don't remember how.
So Ellen has, she was supposed to have a meeting today with Susan, they're at the town council for the select board. Today, it's not gonna be until Friday, so she gave me a little bit of information. I don't know how germane it is right now without whatever she's gonna relay to us, but. Cause it is, cause it is a process that needs to happen before the board can consider your, your subdivision approval.
So we don't, that's why we need to go and get the approval from the roads from the board of selectmen?
Correct. So let me ask you something. I don't even know what I'm doing with the information, whatever you tell me is an answer, but it says here. Was the petitioned highway that was accepted, has that been recorded as part of a plat?
The, the plat that was recorded refers to the vote of the warrant article with the date and how it was accepted.
It doesn't have, it's just say.
It's just let, it's just narrative, right?
Right, it's just completely narrative.
So here's the thing, well, I don't know, she'll have to figure it out.
It's a unique situation with the town accepting roads as a vote as opposed to being laid out by the selectmen, which is usually the way it's done. So this, this is a very weird.
Yeah, extremely, yes.
It's part of the town process. But in this particular case, Kevin owns all those roads, except for the ones he's identified that he does not. And so.
What it's saying though, what it's saying.
My guess, I, I'm not gonna speak for Kevin, but my guess is he, when this is, gets to the completion state, those roads will be turned over to the town.
Understood. The way this is reading though, because part of what he's here for, he's here for a conceptual on the subdivision of two lots, but it's also tied to this road thing.
Correct.
And so there, this is a process conversation, and they're asking about process, and what she was telling me, or what she sent me is referral to planning board and legislative body. It says, if the petitioned highway hasn't already been approved as part of a recorded plat, the RSA prohibits laying out the highway without submitting the question first to the planning board and then to the legislative body. Legislative body being town meeting.
Right.
If this board doesn't approve of that layout, if the board approves a layout, then a majority vote of legislative bodies required. If it disapproves, it's a two-thirds vote of the legislative body. So this is, that's what I'm saying. I don't know what you guys did. This is just, she sent this to me like in a, in a silo. I don't really have any much.
Kevin, I believe you can answer this. These roads were already shown on an approved plat from way back.
Oh, sure.
But they didn't have any meets or bounds or anything?
Right, no, no. But the roads were there, produced or whatever, and, and I believe that meets the requirements of what you just read.
Okay, okay.
I, I, I don't wanna speak for Kevin, but I believe that was a true statement.
I believe that's true. I believe the Dolph and Lamprey at the time, and specifically down in front of ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, that was, that's one of our concept, or one of our meetings that we had with you all, as far as where the lot line of those were. So there is a plan back from nineteen sixty-three or five that, that, that showed that. And because the difference there is do, does lot nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, do they own to the center of the road? And that's where the survey was getting clarification, and they do not. They own to the edge of the road on that part of that road. So that's how the original plan showed it. Okay? So, so there is a, there is a plan from way back when that shows these roads.
So it is on the plat.
Yeah.
So then what more at this stage does the town need, does the planning board need to do? What other action would it need to be taking that we need to discuss process?
I think the planning board, as far as the roads go, I think it just needs to go in front of the board of selectmen for their approval. Right, and then that would approve the roads, and then we can move forward with the subdivision.
So then why would there be a, a dual, a dual hearing of some kind?
Because the board of selectmen, they can't, they need to rule on the roads first.
Right.
What's changing on the roads?
Partially for convenience, because there's thirty-two or more butters, and if we could do it all in one, it saves a few bucks.
But, but you're not changing any of the roads, and the roads are approved.
No, he, he did go to widen the road and identify a twenty-five foot right-of-way, as I recall.
Mm-hmm.
Versus the roads might only be ten foot or fifteen foot wide at any given junction.
So that's, that's the change is to, that basically allow you to widen the road to, to bring the road standard up.
I think, I think the main, I think the.
And the town has already done that.
Right, it's not for Kevin's.
Since last fall, they've come back, they've, they've pulled stumps and they've widened the road.
Steve's been doing stuff as he's maintaining them.
Very nice.
So this, it, the twenty-five, this survey helps, I believe, I, this is one of these weirdest, weirdest things in the world. I think it helps identify, this is where this is, so maybe at some point Mr. Bassett says, hey, um, here's my deed, easement to the town. As shown on this plan, this is where the darn road is located for future purposes, and everybody can identify where it is.
So you'll put monuments in that allow for the road to be.
Reestablished. It's almost like you're establishing your lots boundary, and then from that you draw the twenty-five feet.
Correct, yeah.
I think that's kind of what needs to happen, is a survey that shows the two lots as you're proposing to subdivide them. And then you infer that the road is twenty-five feet from that line that they established for their lots.
And the other lots should also have deeds, which they don't have now, I believe.
That's right.
I think that's, but that's.
That's another.
That's not us.
Right.
Right.
That is something that needs to be taken care of in some way, shape, or form.
But that's, but that would happen later on.
That's a Kevin thing.
Yeah, yeah, and I think he knows that.
So, so on a surveying perspective, that's what you do. You know, I understand what you're saying, that a, a right-of-way, you own both sides, so you own the right-of-way as well. But in a case where there's two owners on each side of that road, and there's a, do they own to the center line? Or do they not, they own to the side of that easement, right-of, whatever?
So.
To the center?
The presumption is to the center, unless there is specific language saying one side of the easement or the other.
Yeah, and that, that, the only exception again is on the Lamprey Drive, down at nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two, and I believe twenty-three. That's the exception.
So my only comment regarding that is I feel that only having a twenty-five foot maintenance easement is not nearly wide enough.
We've already got approval and we'll just go twenty-five.
There, there were discussions, perhaps at a conceptual meeting.
Coming into this at the end, so.
And that some, a width needed to be maintained and established somewhere, but it, I don't, I don't know that it was specifically voted on. This is all kind of a.
Well, I'm, I'm just thinking about things like, you know, drainage and/or slide slopes, things like that. You know, and maintaining that there's sufficient width for fire access.
Wouldn't that be something the town would wanna work with Kevin on?
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's not, it shouldn't be, the, the, the town peoples voted for, to accept these roads.
Without a width.
The town has a lot of responsibility to make sure that they are clear what they want Kevin to do, or how these roads get maintained or monumented.
Yep.
And I think we're all trying to kind of breach that question now and try to get some guidance.
The road agent mentioned to me, I had a long conversation with him the other day, that the, and, and I don't, I don't know that this is correct or true or whatever, but to be a class-five road that it had to be a minimum of fifty feet wide is what I heard. I don't know.
No.
That is not correct?
No.
Okay, that's what I thought it.
Yeah.
It has to be maintained.
There were specific standards.
Yeah, where, yeah, yeah, as is where is, as they were accepted. So, I mean, that's, it's pretty vague.
Yes, yeah, and we just wanna make sure that it's gonna meet the NFPA standards to make sure that the fire truck can get down there.
Okay.
You know, which is generally a twenty-foot clear width, thirteen-six height, that, so that, you know, the largest fire truck can get down there.
So is that burden on Mr. Bassett or on the town at this point where we said, hey, that's our road?
I think it would be the town.
I think it's the town.
It's not a town.
And when you do a sidewalk, hopefully you do, there are now utility poles going up the road. In order to do that, there was, you know, clear to the sky, so there's, there's been a lot of work, so you'll see some, some improvements.
Kevin, is it, and I think you already said this, but is it your desire at some point in time to pass ownership of the road that you own to the town?
That has not been discussed.
Okay, well, Chris was bringing up halfway to the, the middle of the road.
Yep.
Each lot on each side.
Yep.
That's usually in a case where the, where the boundaries of the right-of-way are not typically known, which is the case here. But you own both sides right now.
Yeah.
And I don't, can't speak for the town, but.
When you say boundaries of the road?
The boundaries of any lots, okay, if.
But we know where the road is, all of these roads, we have.
Know where the road is, that's correct.
Skip, the, the center line is often, even though there's a road and town road and town maintained road, in a lot of cases, you own to the central, I was driving my four-wheeler up my road once, and the police pulled me over, I said, I'm on my land.
That's true, but only if people own, different people own different sides of the road. In this particular case, he owns both sides of the road. So yes, technically he owns to the middle. My question is, at some point in time, I would think you'd want to deed the road to the town.
Or an easement.
Deed the road to the town, so he doesn't have to mess with it again.
Okay.
And, and that right-of-way, which is what you've already discussed with the town, would be X. And then your lots would go off, however many they are, to the sides. And, and the road would then always be maintained by the town, owned by the town. The town may not have to take it, but I mean.
Skip, that's, that's already been done as far as that warrant, warrant article. It's just, it's as an easement.
The warrant article didn't do diddly, except for the town to be authorized to maintain the road. That's all it did. That's it.
They've accepted as town road.
Yeah.
It's not a class-five.
Yes, which means that, which means that it is an easement that is owned by the town.
No, there is no legal document that makes that happen.
It's the warrant article.
I don't care if it's the warrant article, it doesn't make that happen.
It, it, it.
Literally does. Potentially a deed that says, this is where the road is, and it's so wide, is probably gonna be very helpful to identify this at some point, but.
So if you wanna move the road, now's the time.
Right.
Well, the warrant article did say as is, so I had no intention of moving it.
No, I, I, that's just a consideration to me.
I figured at some point in time I might be approached to, to vet that, so I, I haven't, I, this has been my priority.
Yeah, well, I understand, but as a result of some of the stuff I've been hearing, perhaps there'll be another warrant article that takes the ownership away from the town. I don't know how they do that, but then you're responsible for taking care of that roadway system. I don't know if you did it before or not, I don't know. All of these camper homes are owned by somebody. All of them are.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. Agreed.
May not know who that is, but they're all owned by somebody. We didn't have to take.
Partially, that's why we did do the petition for a road layout.
Yeah.
Back in, back in twenty-four, almost a year ago, so.
Right, yep.
That was the intent of that.
Correct.
To, to make it formal.
Petition for the war, a warrant article for a vote?
No.
Selectman to lay out the roads.
Selectman to lay out the road.
I have a copy, would you like to have it, or?
No, no, it's, it's, I'm, I'm just trying to understand what you've done, the extra stuff that.
I'm just saying, I, I think when you come in, I think what I'm hoping to see is that, that you're, the land that you're subdividing has been surveyed down along the road and not.
It has. This, this does not show the twenty-five foot.
Yeah, no.
This one does.
We're in conception.
Okay.
That's fine. I'm just hoping that that's the way it shows, if not halfway into the road. Cause I, I don't, I don't think that's the way you wanna do it.
I'm, I'm not.
I'm not quite sure what, what, I'm not sure what he's asking.
Nobody's sure what you just said.
I think I do. I think he's just saying, you know, show it as the twenty-five feet.
And, and it is.
Showing, showing the ownership to the edge of the right-of-way rather than to the center.
Middle of the road, right?
Sure, yeah.
Make sure this, right.
Which is what we have.
Which is normal.
Draw.
So then we could say there's frontage there.
To have frontage.
Yeah, there's more than the frontage.
Not center. You got it. Make frontage, not center.
I mean, it's, it's more than frontage, it's also setbacks and stuff too.
Right.
And then where does, you know, the driveway.
Yeah, all the, all the setbacks were from the edge of the easement as opposed to the center line of the road. It just, it, 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 we wanted to cover any issues. By doing that, we, you know, cause the road is, we tried to center the easement there, but the road twists and turns and stuff. So we, we did all the setbacks from the edge of the easement as opposed to the center of the road, yeah. Ownership, it might be a little different, we'll have to address that.
As far as sent, you know, our monumentation requires every three hundred feet. Will you be setting monumentation every three hundred feet along the Channel Drive, Channel Road, Channel Lane?
So if the town accepted that as the roads, some of that might be, if the board is gonna require that, maybe some of that would be done under guidance or, you know, the town would cover some of those costs, because if he doesn't subdivide it and the roads are where they are, there's no monumentation there. He's putting in one new line of sub, I mean, the lines are where they are.
Yeah, the minus.
Like I said, the, the way the roads are twisting and turning here, you're potentially looking at thirty to forty corners along or angle points on the road, if not more. That's a significant cost to Kevin and to the town as well. If the roads, if they exist as is where is, I, I don't really see the necessity of monumenting every little angle point on these roads.
I think a waiver could be requested. What, what is, in a survey world going backwards, what would be a reasonable?
Not for sitting in the corners, that was. Not for sitting in the corners. That was.
I'm so actually, I was going to suggest either the every three hundred feet or at major corners. So for example, coming down, you know, to about where the first or the second utility pole, and then, you know, at the corner of Dolof Dam Road, you know, at a reasonable spacing and three hundred feet to me sounds reasonable. And just kind of moving a little bit backwards to what Skip was talking about. So the relevant RSA for class-five roads is two-twenty-nine-five and section six, because, you know, "Class five highway shall consist of all other traveled highways which the town has the duty to maintain regularly and shall be known as town roads." "Any public highway which at one time lapsed to class-six status due to five years non-maintenance, but which subsequently has been regularly maintained and repaired by the town on a more than seasonal basis and in suitable condition for year-round travel thereon for at least five successive years without being declared an emergency lane shall be deemed a class-five highway."
Right, but it doesn't give dimensions or anything else.
No.
There's no deeds, there's no nothing associated with it. All it is.
Right, so.
It's a class-five.
In, yeah, I mean.
That's it.
In in Maine, it would be considered rot portion, which is basically just the limits to what the town is using to maintain the status so that it is passable by men, teams, equipment, cars, whatever.
I think just, so what we were proposing quickly for setting corners for Kevin's purposes, we were proposing set a corner here at the limits of his lot, at the new intersection here where the new corner is going to be. And then this is an existing corner here. If he doesn't subdivide, the road is not monumented. I I think if the town requires Kevin to set corners every three hundred feet to accept the subdivision, I think it penalizes Kevin. The town should be, I mean, they accepted the roads to make Kevin pay for the monumentation of those roads when he doesn't.
And then it would only be a portion of the road.
Correct.
Not the whole, all of the road. So.
Correct.
So it's it's three hundred feet?
Well, I I think I.
No, it's larger than that.
It's much larger than that.
I'm saying that's what the every three hundred feet.
Yes, that's what our regulations. That's what the regulations say.
Correct.
Any granite bounds on the corners.
Okay, so so the frontage is something like two thousand, twenty-six.
Uh, we got, yeah, eleven hundred.
And then thirteen.
So that's roughly eight bounds, eight, nine bounds.
Correct. But again, the roads are there. They aren't monumented now. The road exists. He's only subdividing. He's creating one new line, right? If, you know, if he's creating a brand-new subdivision and laying out, you know, creating a brand-new road, put curves in, absolutely. But the road exists. To force Kevin to set corners along the road for the convenience of the town, I don't believe that's correct.
But it's still Kevin's road.
Yeah, but he's going to be paying to set those corners. I mean, if if he doesn't do anything, he can still, if he doesn't subdivide, he can get a building permit on that lot. You guys aren't going to make him set corners.
Correct.
Right? So to have to subdivide the lot, then make him set corners at at the angle points or every three hundred feet along the road, I I don't think that's the correct thing to do.
I mean, is is this tie is this tie course coordinate, I mean, does that? What if this wasn't a clearly three hundred, thirteen hundred frontage and it was, you know, in the hundred and ninety-eight range, you know, just coming up shy of our frontage requirements, right? Like, there isn't, you don't have something here that's verifying indisputably the, you know, the frontage length.
Yeah, we can we can provide the actual frontage length along that road. The tie course is provided here just for mathematical purposes, as opposed to, again, trying to fit curve data, angle points along that road is going to be exceedingly difficult. It's not a uniform road, right? It's not like we're creating subdivision in the computer. We can make everything smooth and look nice and easy. It's going to be exceedingly difficult to to even come up with a line table on those roads. It's just we're looking to try to simplify something and maybe employ a little common sense here that is acceptable to anybody or everybody here.
And today, there's really no value added.
What what is town, you're talking to Ellen, she's talking to the town council about this matter, so that can go to the select board, so they can make some designations? Where where's the town lawyer at with this?
We won't know until after Friday. Is that?
Okay.
That's my understanding is that they're talking Friday morning.
So perhaps, you know, we we could all debate this. And we, you know, you can make an application. You could ask for waivers. I think it would be helpful thirty years from now when you're not around, or longer, sir, maybe fifty years, young guy. You know, someone wants to divide your lot or do something, where is any, you know, is there good monumentation or documentation about what's there fifty years from now?
Yeah, the plan will serve as that documentation. The monumentation that we set should, unless it's removed, should last fifty, hundred years.
If the board was to accept a waiver from three hundred and and say five hundred feet, six hundred feet, does that change the situation for you?
I don't believe so. Because what about all the other roads in the town? That you guys accepted them, right? So is the town going to pay to go have all the angle points along all these other roads that were accepted, marked and monumented? Because they, I mean, the subdivision occurred when the roads were accepted. So to make Kevin go and do it for the justice particular and leave all the other roads, your argument's kind of.
No, no, because you're coming before the board with a request, and the request requires about at at the very least a boundary survey and requires.
We're only creating one new corner. We're creating one new corner.
But you're creating a new frontage line because of the easement.
Yep, and we will have the.
And the twenty-five, the twenty-five-foot wide easement, yeah, maintenance.
You'll have the tie.
Yeah, I mean, the one new corner will be tied to monuments that we set. And again, it's.
Okay.
It just seems a little prejudicial. You know, like I said, we're going to require Kevin to set all the angle points here, but not require them at any of the other lots.
But the lots, those are lots aren't before this board as part of a subdivision application.
No, but it's it's all tied together. As I said, this is a unique situation, and we're looking for guidance. I we've already submitted a formal application for the subdivision. I did not include a waiver for setting the lot corners because we weren't really sure what to do. We weren't, we hadn't received any feedback from the town about what they're looking for. I think Kevin's willing to work with the town on some things and to give a take situation here.
Yeah. And and I agree. I I don't see that monumentation every three hundred feet is necessary necessarily.
Be happy to do it. If the town wants to pay us to do it, we'll go set up a corner.
But as long as there's a map that exists and a flat that exists with the tie marks and all that kind of stuff.
And if the assessor is generating.
System anyways.
Yeah, is generating a.
Maybe as a, maybe as a. It does, if it's a subdivision.
Well, some of them don't show up there.
I that's.
I mean, the lots have to be have to be recorded.
Right. Maybe as a point of compromise, maybe we, you know, instead of only having two ties, maybe we, you know, one tie per lot, maybe we create an additional tie somewhere. So each lot will have maybe two ties. It would provide an additional monumentation on each section of the frontage for each lot. And then that way, they'd be recoverable as opposed to just doing two. I think Kevin might be amenable to that.
Can you, is it possible to focus those on the breaks in the roads? So we're.
Yeah, that's what I was just saying.
We could do that, like someone by Dolof Dam Road.
Yeah.
I was thinking here, this is a pretty significant curve. We could put a tie course down here by Dolof Dam Road. We could do another one up here by Indian Run.
Right.
Yeah, I'm happy with that.
That'll work.
Or that bendy down further on on channel where it kind of takes a.
Where are an S-curves?
Yeah. Yeah, up in that section there, I think.
We can look at the little sample, like, yeah, possibly.
Are we looking at rebar bounds or granite markers with drill holes?
I know bounds are recorded. Bounds are required at all new corners. So I think, I guess we would defer to the board, setting, you know, if we set monuments at angle points by Dolof Dam, up by Indian Run, you know, look for the board for guidance, whether it's going to be granite bounds or rebar.
I I think that if, as part of their request on the waiver for that, that we can state, you know, either rebar or granite bounds would be sufficient, as long as they're, you know, permanent and recoverable.
It's the tuckaway, so we don't, we, you know.
There's this much of dirt.
So we do have a hammer drill. We could have said, you know, we, in the past, we have taken a hammer drill and we've drilled into ledge or large boulders and set rebar in them. If we get that situation, maybe that's something we could do, too. So. Okay.
Okay, I mean, the regulations only state corners, get the granite bounds. But, yeah, I I defer to people that know better than I do about what's best practice at those locations. I just think, you know, my being a kind of a stickler on this is just, I think it's it's better for everybody at this time. But, you know, the board knows what to do best.
Well, let's 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 see what the council has to say. And we we have a select board member. Maybe you guys can chat about this once Ellen looks at that and we can come back to another meeting before jumping full-on into the whole subdivision, so we can identify some of these loose, flailing parts.
Yeah, I mean, we, until this is sorted out, the board can't hear the subdivision application. The board, the road has to be made, you know, right? Is that your interpretation?
Yes.
That's mine. That's the way I'm reading it and the way I've had it explained to me.
I gotta put this in my other folder.
Carry carry two binders.
So I think we're, I think.
If you're good, I'm good.
I think we're good for now.
Real gentleman can can compromise.
Arm wrestling match.
Alana is going to set this on an agenda yet.
No, I think.
Subdivision application.
So, yeah, what was something, maybe we can.
Tentatively, we were hoping for the second-ish for the for the Board of Selectmen. That's.
The second of June.
Of June, yeah, which is well, more than the thirty days-ish, and it gives a little extra time. And if it wasn't going to be adjoint, then the meeting after that was the eleventh with you all. So that was just tentative. That was just conceptual dates that that we were hashing around.
And this this would allow it to to, if if Alana doesn't accept the application, that would allow us to also clarify who's going to be responsible for notifying which butters. It would also give me a chance to submit a waiver for setting specific corners and, you know, we can do that next week, get that back to the board for the actual final application. As we were kind of looking for guidance here, so.
Yeah.
I think we have time now to make, take your suggestions and kind of go with them, resubmit or add to our submission package. That way, we'd be able to get on the agenda for the June eleventh meeting and get in front of the Board of Selectmen.
And I I can't help but wonder if it wouldn't be helpful to the town, just thinking out loud that that there's a deed or easement that says, hey, this is the newly identified location of this road, just so that there's a document to follow in the future, and it references like this map and ties it back together. So anybody looking at this thirty years from now can say, oh, this 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 was the action.
That'll be part of the subdivision application, will be the the subdivision plan will have that information on it.
At least for.
But that's only, that's only a piece of the road.
Part of Dolof.
It's not the whole road.
I I understand.
At least for the for the section of road.
Right.
That doesn't make sense.
No, I agree.
Why would you do an easement for a little piece of road when there's more of the road?
The easement should cover, any easement that gets written should be covering all these roads that were accepted by the board article. It shouldn't be just this one little section here.
Yeah, if you want to do that.
That should be under the guidance of the town. Because the town was the one that, I mean, this is all initiated from the town. Kevin's the landowner, but he didn't go to the selectmen and ask you guys to lay out the road, right? The town did this. The town's people voted. So if there's going to be any easement languages about the remainder of the towns, it should be something the town council works with, and Kevin can work with the town council and get something.
And that's kind of what I'm saying. I don't know exactly what needs to be done, but maybe a document that says, this is this is what was done here today that's recorded, it's an easement, and then anybody can look and go, the town has a right-of-way, you know, somebody, unworn articles is, I don't know. I don't know.
I don't know.
It's very, it's, this is highly unusual, so it's.
Very unusual.
Nobody's ever done this before, I don't think, the whole universe.
I'm the first.
Breaking new ground. All right, so we have we have a way forward. We'll get some, we'll get the opinion from the council this, hopefully sooner than we'll get the other stuff in, and we can look at addressing some of the easements and we can be contacted with the town council. I'll contact Nancy and from Cartographic, see what, or add with the tax cars.
Yeah, that that'll at least.
You guys here for this?
Yeah.
These are the two recipients of the. This is my parting gift.
They're the problem. It's their fault.
How you liking it so far?
It's kind of on the lawn, but.
I'm also kidding for Ellen.
Me, too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next on our.
Euro.
Is this, I'm up to talk about parking for a building. Are you guys have brain power? It's ten o'clock here.
That's your your baby.
That's on you, bud.
Yeah, whether you want to talk about that or not, that's on you.
Let's do this. I have to recuse myself to present and go over there.
All right, next person up.
Oh, yeah, we got a, oh, shoot.
You.
Okay. What is this? I'm sorry.
So this is a preliminary consultation.
Okay, so it's a consultation?
Yes, this is falling under as a preliminary consultation. So.
Technically, it kind of covers some of this. I'll I'll explain. I'll try to fly through real quick.
Oh, my God, look at this. We're talking about the other homework we had.
We need to review this or preview it.
So I bought a house. It's a fixer-upper. I wanted to put a little apartment in there for my son, who was coming out of the Navy, and it's a split entry. My first house was a split entry, and we had a little apartment down, and it was great. I don't live there. So to, in our zoning ordinance, to, A, an apartment is an allowed use in this district for this property. And then, but there's complications in in there. In the site plan, it says, in the in the zoning, it says, "The parking shall be determined by the planning board." So when I went to see the building inspector, he said, well, you have to go to the planning board. I'm like, okay. But in the site plan review regs, it says, "Two families are exempt from site plan review regs," and it also says the same in the in the zoning ordinance, that that a two-family is not required to go to the site plan. So.
Where does it say that?
Pardon me?
Where does it say that?
It was.
The two units exempt.
Right up on the, in the beginning of it.
What's the section of it?
It quickly kind of ends up being, this is for commercial properties only or for multi.
And when you say site plan review, are you talking about zoning ordinance?
No. Site plan regulations under Article One. This review authority shall be applied to the development of tracks of non-residential uses or for multifamily dwelling units, which are defined as any structure containing more than two dwelling units per structure.
And our unit has only two, not more than two. So.
No way.
Yes. So therefore, the site plan review regs didn't seem to apply.
Correct.
And and there was also an exemption in the in the zoning regs that said, "Such structure shall not require," Article two F, two A duplex, "Such structure shall not require site plan review." So there was, we're not under site plan review regulations. This is not a subdivision. We have conceptual design and design review, which are non-binding, and we're looking for a determination as required under Article two F, multifamilies. It says the adequacy of off-street parking shall be determined by the planning board, and it shall provide for the combined needs of all the units of the building. And in section G of that same section on conversions, it says, "Any fixtures such as dumpsters, fire escapes shall be, may require planning board screening, et cetera." shall be, um, um, may require, um, planning board screening, et cetera.
And that was all zoning, right?
That was in zoning, yes.
Okay. It said all two, section, Article Two sections.
Article Two F four, um, and then there's a conversion section under multifamily, uh, the second part of that. And then, on the conversion section, there's, um, um, criteria A through G or H.
Page nine.
Huh?
Page nine.
Thank you, yes, perhaps. I don't, I, I was gonna print that and didn't do that. So, basically, I went to Dale and said, hey, I wanna, um, make a two-family here and, but the site plan review regs don't work and the subdivision review regs and the conceptual doesn't work. So, in a traditional world, you go to the building inspector and say, hey, I wanna build a house and here's my two parking spaces and here's my driveway and here's my setbacks, and he would give you a permit, um, or septic sign, et cetera. In this case, he's saying, well, I could give you a permit, but it says in this section that the planning board has to make determination about the adequacy of the parking. So, we're here to say, this is a supplemental review of the building permit process to say, is there sufficient parking in this particular building? And, um, so this is a, um, I put notes in here about this being a business matter of the planning board, because it says, the planning board shall make this determination, though we don't have a process for it. So, um, I did go through a whole list of criteria, uh, that's in this section. Um, it says, review request criteria, that talks about all the, um, conditions in there to make a determination. And then at the end, there's a potential for motions to be made to say, hey, this, this is a planning board matter and that we think this parking is adequate and sufficient. If you flip in a few pages, there's, um, a site, uh, a plot plan, um, that was done. Uh, that plot plan also is, um, matched off by a, um, it's, um, the site, um, septic design done in the back, where he tied to, um, you know, the corners and lot lines and some, uh, some markers that were found and the buildings and the topography and all that. If you look at the next page of the plot plan, it shows some parking, um, highlighted in different areas. There's, um, a two-car garage, there's a garage under, there's driveways pulling up to it, there's a big cement slab. If you go to the next page, there's some pictures of all those same things, the garage, the, um, garage under and the, uh, parking areas, you can see my truck sitting there on the cement slab. And, you, you know, there's way more than enough parking, we need four parking spaces. And, um, so is the parking that is existing on this existing property sufficient, is the question.
So you're showing five parking spaces, which looks like there's easily five parking places and.
There's easily a lot more, it's three acre lot.
Yeah. I don't understand.
So, my question is. The apartment, whatever you wanna call it.
Yep.
Is going to be inside your house, correct?
Yeah.
So it's an ADU.
I don't live there.
But, right, right, cause you're not gonna, cause you own it and you don't live there.
Yeah.
And, and that's exactly what Dale said, right out of the box, Dale, it's an ADU and I could give you a permit on that today. I said, well, it's not, I don't live there, I can't say I live there. So it's, became a two-family and it became a convert, now if it was a regular two-family, we would need two acres per dwelling unit, but when you go to that conversion section, it says, lot size doesn't matter. The whole ideal perhaps was that you have this fourteen-room farmhouse somewhere in town and, you know, they don't have fourteen kids anymore like they used to have and, you know, herds of cattle and goats to take care of, so they make a couple of apartments out of it. And, um, so this is the same type of thing, just trying to convert this existing building with existing driveways, um, into, um, a unit. And so, in doing this conversion, there are criteria and, uh, section, whatever section it is. The conversion section, page nine, did you say?
Uh, that's, yeah, page nine is the multifamily dwelling conversions.
Okay, and if you look at, um, particularly item.
Two or more units on a single structure.
Item, um, hmm, hmm, hmm. Item H, I, I'm sorry, item E. For the purposes of this section, the adequacy of off-street parking shall be determined by the planning board and it shall provide for the combined needs of all units within the building structure. So Dale is reading that, saying, I need to send this to the planning board, and there was not a process. So we're saying, well, it's a supplemental review for you guys to say, is there adequate parking there or not for a two, two units? Uh, we have a septic design in the back, it's been approved for, um, two units with these, all the bedrooms. Um, everything else is existing in there, there's parking, there's dr- paved driveway. I'm not asking for a re-subdivision, it's all existing, it was all built in nineteen seventy-three, so this clearly fits under this conversion, um, section.
So, when I spoke to Dale about it, um, you know, what we decide, what we, our interpretation of it was that, you know, demonstrating that the property meets the residential lots in existence prior to March thirtieth, twenty-ten, if that can be demonstrated and then the subsection E for parking spaces can be demonstrated, then it would be able to fall under this multifamily conversion. For this board, Dale has to do other things, you know, like the stuff here about minimum lot, minimum unit size and stuff like that.
Yeah, that's all under building.
And, and fire, fire code and.
Yeah, his submission to the board here would just be.
The parking.
What you would present to us just has to demonstrate those two things. The lot in existence and the, the parking.
Yeah.
And what you show here, I mean, I don't wanna speak for the board, does seem to be adequate. So if these were submitted as part of, like, a building permit application, the board could take a look at and confirm, I think that that would be sufficient.
And, and I will just mention in, on the couple points, you know, this is the assessment card that shows, um, the year built as, um, nineteen seventy-four.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, there was no real debate over, I think just, since we're here to talk about process.
Yeah.
The process is applicable to anybody that would come before the board at this, you know, for this, under this multifamily conversion. So I think for consideration of what Chris would submit, as well as anybody else in the future, those would be the two things that the board would need to confirm. Beyond that, it becomes the building inspector's responsibility.
I think there's one other item here too, and I mentioned a little bit earlier about units. It's not defined in our regulations of what a unit is. What, what is a unit? Is a unit one large building with multiple bedrooms in it? Is that one unit?
Right.
So. It, it, it does say, first, the purpose of the, of this section, multifamily conversion shall be two or more units in a single structure, and this is in a single structure.
Two or more units, so one of those units could have eight bedrooms.
One.
It, it doesn't, it. If you read through the rest of that, it does, it does, it does talk about that, it says, um, it shall not exceed eight units and the allowed, um, building shall be a combination of units, no individual one-bedroom unit less than three hundred and fifty feet, uh, an individual two-bedroom, not less than five hundred and fifty feet, and there shall be no more than four units in the conversion, fifty, fifty percent or more shall be two bedrooms. And, in this case, there's a two-bedroom and a one-bedroom, so fifty percent are two bedrooms.
So, to answer your question, yes, one unit could have eight bedrooms. What dictates, what dictates bedrooms per lot is septic. And so, and that's true of any subdivision, of any proposal, of anything that would be in our, in this community.
Well, and that, and that, and that is in item X H. The existing replacement proposed septic must be certified by a licensed designer, um, in accordance, blah, blah, blah. And there is a, an approved, um, approval for construction here at the end, and the septic design is there.
How many bedrooms is a septic design?
Um, it's set up for, um, existing two-bedroom, proposed two units, two bedrooms each, so four bedrooms, but I think it's actually a five-bedroom design because of.
Okay.
The, so it's.
Um, just, this is a, this is a concern that I've had.
Number of bedroom, four bedrooms.
In our regulations about multifamily, um, developments.
Yep.
Is that, so, Blair, what you said is that, that's defined by the septic, so now.
It's limited by the septic.
Well, no, well, yeah, okay, it's limited, but now that person can have five units, five bedrooms, when the approval or approval was for two units.
Right, but so.
But he can only have two independent living units, which is bedroom, um, bathroom and kitchen with a stove.
How many bedrooms could be in there?
Any number, a unit is not limiting bedrooms.
So, the, in the regulations, the, the definition of the dwelling units.
That's what I'm looking for, yeah.
Um, so dwelling unit, single family, a building or portion of a building consisting of one or more rooms designed for living and sleeping, including kitchen, sanitary, and intended for occupancy by not more than one family or household. So, independent of number of bedrooms. Um, but then dwelling unit, two-family or duplex, residential building designed for or occupied by two families living independently of each other in individual attached dwelling units. So, two, single family, you know, it, it doesn't necessarily say how many bedrooms are in each, you know, you could have two, three-bedroom, uh, pieces to a duplex. But then, we have down here dwelling unit, multifamily, residential building designed for or occupied by three, but not more than four families. So, I mean, the maximum number of units that you can have is four, based on this. Um, unless it's work for housing and then you can do up to six.
So there, there are some flaws in that and I don't wanna.
There's a lot of flaws in it.
Yes.
There's lots of them.
And this is, this has been ruling from the town, that we cannot define what a family is. So, how does that work in, if we're saying it's only for four families? And, you know, what constitutes a family? So, there, there are some issues that we have in our own.
Well, yeah, just the fact that it limits it to four, whereas, you know, you go back to this multifamily conversion and it says up to eight, and even back up here in the, um, residential, uh, the residential zone, it says up to six units.
So.
So, yeah.
How, how are we talking about septic's and bedroom or not, but the question was, did he have adequate parking?
Right, that's right.
It could be, cause it's, it's ten-thirty at night, I've been going since five AM, um, but, uh, but.
I agree with you.
So, in, at the end of the, my four pages there, I put together a potential motion to make determinations. We're looking, Dale is looking for some sort of determination and review that, hey, there's adequate parking. I did cover all of the items under eight, under that, um, including, here's the septic, um, there's no dumpsters. Um, it's an existing building, the, there's two bedrooms upstairs and one bedroom downstairs. It's, it's a small split entry, it's not, you're not adding to it. I'd love to take the garage and make some small house and do lots of things, but we have a two-bedroom and a one-bedroom and a septic system and parking for all that.
I think that's the guidance, the guidance from the board on process is you apply for a building permit and you submit that to the board to, with, whatever you want as confirmation that is a lot in existence prior to that date, of March of twenty-ten, and that you can show the four parking spaces.
Yep.
There you go.
So they're, they're showing here, there's pictures, there's a plot plan, there's a.
Submit it with a building permit application to the board, the board will give it its blessing and send you back.
There you go.
Today is to talk about process, not to approve.
Okay, we, I was looking to kinda get going on this, I've, sitting here with lots of people waiting to do things like everybody in the world. Um, I, it is my belief that the.
You know this is a preliminary consultation, with it, it's non-binding.
It is not, there, there is not a process for making.
Right, and we determined it tonight.
As set forth in the.
Can we just determine it for him, so we don't have to do this again?
Dale just, Blair just did.
All right.
I, I think under the RSA's that the planning board can vote and under a quorum and make determinations that are planning board business, and this certainly falls under planning board business to make a determination that there is or is not adequate parking. I've already submitted a building permit to the town and it's sitting there on Dale's desk, you know it's there, so I need to bring that over here now?
Yes, cause this is a preliminary consultation, it's a.
It's not a preliminary consultation.
That's, the only reason why you're before this board, you didn't submit any application for anything. You wouldn't get on an agenda without it, the only path to getting on the agenda with what you've submitted thus far is a preliminary consultation.
There's no application process defined in our ordinance for this. This is not a site plan, it's exempt from site plan, it's exempt from subdivision regulations and preliminary consultations do not make determinations, they're non-binding and we're trying to make a determination of parking for this matter, so.
Path forward is wearing people down, but that's not the way it's supposed to be done. So, you guys are, I, you know, my understanding of preliminary consultation is that it's a non-binding conversation about process. You tell him what the process is and then he follows that process.
So the process is to submit the application and then.
For the board to make the determination of those two items. Yes, it's a slam dunk, but that's the process now. So, if the board wants to make another decision, you are welcome to do it, you know, I'm just telling you.
Under consultation, it looks like it's a slam dunk.
Yes, I would agree, but, you know, part of this is that it also clarifies process for anybody else.
So submit.
And the fact that, you know, um, there would not be any other way to get on the agenda but through this process, through the preliminary consultation, I just, I don't, again, the board wants.
Special privilege for you.
All right. A special privilege for you.
Yeah, I mean, I would say that if there isn't a specific application form to fill out.
There is not.
Then write a letter.
That's what this is.
Okay, and then submit that, so the board can review it.
I submitted a building permit and this is a supplement to that building permit.
Right, we don't get that, we just got this.
Of course you don't, you, that's why we're calling this a supplemental building permit review request, because there is no process at, we've identified in the zoning ordinance, that's the problem, there is no process.
Why can't you submit the building permit application with enough information, supplement to it, to let the board make their determination and give a vote? Why does that, why is that, why is that so hard for you? I understand that what you wanted to have done tonight, but here we are, you know.
And realistically, I believe this needs to change to the zoning requirements to allow the capability for a process like this to happen, but that's not tonight.
That is definitely not tonight, but I wanted to point out that there's a, a potential flaw in our zoning ordinance.
Mission accomplished.
That can be believed or not.
Plenty of flaws in our.
If that's what you came here for, we're good.
Yeah.
There's no determination to be made.
Consider yourself so notified of this.
I mean, I'm recusing.
Recusing myself, okay, welcome back, all right, um.
Chairman, what, what would you like to do with this meeting?
Go home, um, do we?
You have the power.
We have one minute to ten-thirty and then we have to, everyone turns, everyone turns a pumpkin. All right, so let's.
No public comment, hello out there.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes from four-five, four-nine, is that just the two? Don't we have other ones as well?
And, uh, yeah.
Yeah, the, whatever the third one is. Make a motion, we approve, yeah.
Site plan, or sidewalk, rather, meetings, minutes.
I, I read them all and they're all good, except that I wasn't at one, so I can't approve that one, I won't vote on that one.
Excuse me.
So I have stay, I have stay from the site plan one.
Okay, do we wish?
You don't need to.
I know, I don't need to. If we're gonna.
You're voting to approve it because you have confidence that the secretary and the secretary, his administrative, had come up with the right minutes.
And I'm okay with doing it all as well. I made a motion to approve the minutes of four-five, four-nine and whatever the third.
We have a second.
Other four-nine.
Seconds, okay, both.
All right.
All right.
Okay, minutes, minutes still be accepted, um, we had reviewed bylaws, we're gonna, um.
Punt.
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 To another meeting.
Punt to another meeting, check.
Keep punting on that, because honestly, I'm fine by running by what we have until they completely be rewritten because, um, you sent those other ones. Even the candy, a three-pager, is probably still too long, based on what I've been putting, looking at. It's like, it, the only thing that really has to be defined is how alternates are used. And, and it actually, yeah, used and abused. And it's actually defined in RSA as what they can do anyway, so there's probably.
I think part of it is, is the convenience of looking at it and having a clear answer, but yeah, I hear what you're saying. Alright.
Motion adjourned. Second.
No discussion on the motion, adjourned.
Yeah, but we'd skip the thing and we'll right to the adjourn.
Yeah, that's fine.
Everything else we'll put off to the next one.